Let's follow some sort of order, meeting of the West Newbury Select Board and a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Moderator. This meeting is being broadcast on local cable TV and reported for rebroadcast in all the cable channels and the internet. Meeting is accessible by remote participation via Zoom. Some announcements, Earth Day is coming up. Pick up supplies that we try to pick up stuff to make our town look better. That's as simple as that. Get rid of the trash along the roadways. Supplies will be available at the town offices, the library, and/or at the food mart. And further details about leaving your materials that can be ultimately picked up by the DPW, you can check it out on the town website. Town meeting, annual and special town meeting is coming up April 24th, like the good old days, pre-COVID. It's going to be a Monday meeting starting at 7:00 PM, April 24th, 2023. For people that have questions about and want to get more information, it's proved to be a useful forum. There's going to be two pre-town meeting forums to where people can ask questions of the town manager, the town clerk. The Select Board will be probably at the evening meeting. I'm assuming some FinCom people could be there also, so to ask questions if you don't understand things about a certain article on the annual or special town meetings, it's a good place to ask. And it's turned out that this is helpful. It speeds up the actual meetings because people are more informed actually as to the nuances of the different questions. And it's quite helpful. So the one will be a luncheon learning at the Sage Center on Thursday, the 13th this week, at 11:30 to 1:00. And another meeting in the same subject in the evening, April 13th, at 6:00 PM. Are we going to do it on the annex? Or we're here?
Here.
Here, okay. Town election, Monday, May 1st. Polls open at 7:00 AM. Remember, that's a Monday election, not a Tuesday election. The legislature, in its infinite wisdom, has allowed a further extension of virtual and hybrid public meetings going on for at least an additional year. You can find details about that. And finally, call for volunteers and open positions on boards and committees. See wnewberry.org/volunteer and announcements, all that stuff, wnewberry/subscribe. I had a little personal announcement. I saw West Newbury's Police Department in great, performing great this morning in my driveway. I looked out, I thought, oh no, what did I do? There's two police cars in my driveway. But so what can easily only be described as a wild goose chase. So the Animal Control Officer, Preventer, and Sergeant Parento successfully captured a and created without hurting it a goose that had been on the loose for a couple of days, brought it back to their owners. So just want to thank the police department in action. They did a great job. And West Newbury Police Department always gets their man, or at least their goose. First order, in no way am I being sarcastic, but they did a great job. It's not easy catching a goose. Try it.
Was this a wild goose, or a...?
No, it was a domestic goose. The people that have lost it live down Kelly Brook Lane. First item on the agenda is appointments to the Board of Fire Engineers. So Jim, do we have any additional people that have requested appointments, or do you know of any, or no?
The only requests or asks for appointments essentially would be the current board.
Current board, okay.
So all five current members have expressed interest in reappointments. So it'd be Mike Dwyer, Dave Evans, Ben Janelle, Cooper Carrpio, and Mark Marlowe. I know we see we have Ben on via Zoom. I'm not sure if we have others. We did tell people for reappointments, they're not required to come before the board.
So any feedback on how the five-member board versus the three has worked out?
Dwyer tells me it's worked well. He said that early, and I checked in with him three or four weeks ago, how this was coming up. And he thought the five-member has worked out well. I don't know, Ben, if you want to chip in, we also have a number. I don't know what you know who this number is, if that's someone from Fire Engineers or someone else.
Ben's muted. I don't know, please. Angus, you think Ben is still?
He is.
Yeah, that's his...
He's muted.
There we go. Am I now? I think the five has worked well, too.
Okay, thanks. Right, I move to reappoint the five members of the Fire Engineers Board.
Sorry. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Town starts out, so follow up. Make sure people get sworn in again if they need to. I don't know if they need to, anyway, always. All right, we also, this was a late addition to the agenda. Item B is a requirement for the board to annually approve the town of Newbury election workers. So this is way more than we need, but as you know, sometimes people aren't able to work certain elections and things like that. So this is who I would anticipate to be available if needed. And I will have discussions on who's available and who's not.
So there's a set number of slots you have to fill?
There's no set number. It's just how many I feel I would need to work the election, to check in, to hand out ballots. We need to process early voting ballots that have been coming in by management, things like that. But otherwise, I think that would be more than often needed if we needed one.
Okay, we move. Do we appoint the slate of election workers as shown in the package during the meeting?
Second.
Discussion?
What's the term of that? Is that for the calendar year?
Okay.
That's interesting. So it's for a calendar year. But there's only one election this year.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We wanted to get those appointments done early before we get into the next topic is the joint meeting with the Finance Committee, Town Council, Town Moderator, it's also the Town Moderator, and myself and the Town Clerk to talk about draft motions and any other logistics related to town meeting tonight. So we do have Tim Zesson joining us via Zoom, and also the Town Account is on in case there's any questions for Jenny that come up. And we did get comments from KP this afternoon, so I sent those around via email. I didn't expect that everyone would have time for review those, so we did go ahead and print hard copies. So if there's anyone from Finance Committee, you have all those?
And Moderator.
Oh, I guess we handed them out. All right. So we did circulate hard copies reflecting Tim's red lines. And Mike, you got those, too?
Yeah.
Very good.
And have tons of papers.
So as far, let's start with the annual town meeting. I guess we don't need to... I think we should mention Article 4 first, and Article 3, as there's sort of a team. The, if the Article 3 passes, then we're going to need to have somebody put a hold on the, on line 40 to, so that there will be $200,000 less on raising appropriate for the for the school budget. Pretty simple.
Yeah. I do want to just draw attention. This is procedurally the same as we've done the last several years, but it is, the specifics are a little bit different. And I know I sent a detailed email to the board last week about this. But basically, in the past, what we've done is reduced the Pennsyltucket appropriated debt service by the same dollar amount that was authorized for school stabilization. The problem with that, even though it's correct and resulted in the correct bottom line, is it results in apparent, you know, a budgeted number for capital assessment. So I've got it up on the screen. Tim, I'll do a screen share so you can see what I'm trying on here. But if you look at the budget book, the FY23 approved budget for Pennsyltucket Capital is showing 835,497. That's the net amount. So that doesn't, that doesn't align with the actual assessment from Pennsyltucket. The actual assessment from Pennsyltucket is 835,497 plus the 397,325 for school stabilization. So this has never really sat well with me because it results in a number that's a little different, or maybe a lot different from the assessed amount. So we did check with the Department of Revenue to see if a different approach would work, and she said it would. And that would be, and that's how we're at the draft motion here, is to actually add a negative number to this transfers in from school stabilization, to add a negative 200,000, because that would result in a correct bottom line in terms of what's got to be raised and appropriated, without skewing the budgeted school amount. So it's mechanically, or I guess procedure are the same, but the specifics are a little different. So I want to talk that over tonight rather than potentially have a question from the board at town meeting.
Angus? Yeah. So would the moderator read the line, "transfers from school stabilization, zero," and someone would yell "hold" on that?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you know, I think, I don't know if, would you read each line as a single bottom line, or would you read each sub-line? I think Casey would normally have said like, 28, library, 29, recreation, so forth. So you'd get the 40 transfers, and that would be where someone would place a hold.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you place it on transfers, and then the result would be minus 200,000?
Correct, yeah.
Or whatever happened?
Or, yeah.
Whatever happened before it?
Right.
Okay.
So I kind of like that. Jenny thought it was great because it's, and I don't speak for her, she's on here, but she thought it was great because it just, yeah, I think it's going to result in cleaner year-on-year reporting of the actual assessments rather than having these peaks and valleys because of school stabilization.
Oh, okay. So the number in the school line items is going to be more even?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the very first year we did this, and Mike, you'll remember this, the very first year we transferred from school stabilization, we didn't amend the budget. And then when we were working with DOR over the summer, they told us, you've carried the 397,325 in your operating budget, and you've transferred it from here. So you double counted it. So you'll recall, we went to the fall town meeting to take that 397 out of the budget. And since that time, we've been doing this hold, which works. It's just a matter of where it comes out. So I think this will be cleaner. It's just going to be newer to people. So I wanted to bring it up tonight because I'm sure it will raise questions. But I think the answer is one that I think will make sense to people.
So where, at what point would you explain what's happening? Before somebody, before we have that line held, or?
I think when you get the hold, then it would be, then when we get to that, all the holds, we come to line 40.
At that point, you have a chance to make an explanation.
But during Article 3, you know, you could say something there of, you know, of who, even the FinCom may be during the rationale. I think if someone could say, if Article 3 passes, the amount appropriated from Article 3, or transfer from Article 3, will be taken out of the budget in the next article. So...
So you have to put a hold on that also?
No, you're saying not to change that one, Angus. You're saying to change it on 40.
Right, but you could still say...
You can explain it when you write it for free.
Yeah, yeah, just so they know that that will come in.
So it's just going to be adjacent to it. I will get to it right away.
Right.
This is going to be fun. This is the last year we have to make that happen?
Now, then another two years, or fewer, more or less.
Okay, Article 5. So did the FinCom get the new changes done by Tim?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure, but they haven't had a chance to look.
Well, they were emailed around right when they were sent to you, just a couple of ballots.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, that's the same ratio that was handed out.
So part of the kind of needle that Tim was trying to thread, maybe Tim, I've got to preface it, and then maybe you can figure that out. There's a couple of statutes that, you know, Tim, as he was reading the draft motion, would want to make sure that this adhered to. One is, and I don't have the citation handy, but one is the section of that general law that vests in the Select Board the authority to enter municipal agreements. Actually, I do have the citation. It's general law, Chapter 42, 4A. And that basically designates the Select Board as having the authority to enter intermunicipal agreements in general. There's also the 1936 Water Act, Chapter 38 of the Acts of 36. That specifically empowers our West Newbury Board of Water Commissioners for certain types of intermunicipal agreements, basically to do with the purchase of water. They do have that authority under the 1936 Act. So Tim, you can correct me or elaborate, but I believe the intent of the revisions is to make sure that this motion basically adheres to both of those things. We can't preempt the legislative authority that the Water Commission has to negotiate rates. To the extent that an IMA goes anything beyond that, that is something that the Select Board would have standing and would be the signatory for anything other than to do with purchase of water.
Right. And again, we're, I think, just to reiterate what you said, Angus, we're trying to thread the needle a little bit here because there's, there is a narrow, there's a narrow authority that's been given to the Board of Water Commissioners in this 100-year-old special act that's applicable here. And to the extent that they do have authority to enter into agreements with neighboring towns, we just want to make sure that the Select Board is notified that they're going to be doing this, and authorizing a member of the Select Board and the town manager to be part of the negotiating team. You know, like Angus said, we can't supersede the special act, the 100-year-old special act. What we can do is make sure that we're on the same page, and the Select Board has notice of their intent to enter into an IMA. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you want to, Archie, did you want to articulate kind of what you were telling me earlier about priority of financial study relative to IMA?
So of the two, the two messages we want to get across to the, to the Board of Water Commissioners as instructions here, we feel that the the recommendations that the Finance Committee about developing a financial plan and all that is very important. But actually, in terms of time sequencing, the town and the Water Department has been working with Newport without an IMA for almost 30 years now. And we're sort of working without a net. And we, and for a couple of reasons, because A, that's not good. We need, we need concrete ability to continue to be able to purchase the amount of water that was set back a long time ago. But now it's not, it's no longer valid. And New Report has been talking about cutting, cutting that amount back. And also, we'd like to obviously purchase water at a wholesale rate. And, but because of projects that the city of Newport Water Department is planning, and most of them are actually going to happen in our town, this gives us for the first time in a long time, a little more leverage that rather than being had in hand that, please don't charge us so much for water, we actually have some, a little bit of, a little bit more bargaining power now because of the potential pipelines that are going to be placed in West Newbury pumping stations, those kind of things. So we have a little bit more bargaining chips. So we think it's propitious at the moment that this is the time to get the, the sort of comprehensive IMA nailed down. So to make a long story short, the, we think that both of these two things are important, but we actually think in terms of that the IMA is not really a sidelight. That's the, that's the most important thing that needs to get done first. And that a 15-year financial plan, that's a, that's a big undertaking. We believe in doing both of them, but, but we don't want it to be a sidelight. We want that to, both of these items to be sort of separated a little bit so that the public understands this direction to the Water Commissioners. And then there's, in other words, we want to have a one and a two, or an A and B. And we sort of feel that the IMA should be A. Does that articulate?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, but why, the same way you've been putting two years, and you're charging both? And who are you speaking to right now? I guess I'm puzzled by that.
Well, we just want, we...
But the rationale is mostly about the financial plan. There's one sentence at the end about the IMA, or the motion. So I think what we are planning on doing is doing another draft of the motion and sharing it. I want to figure out how to meld the two.
One forward. Yeah, I guess in general, the thought was that one item is an immediate item, and the other one equally important, but it's a longer-term item. And it may make sense to leave with the immediate item. And then...
You're the one writing.
Yeah.
Anyway, you're writing the language.
So does this language give you the right to order them, pursue this IMA while it's advantageous? Or, because it just looks like it's going to be like the process. Could they say, okay, we'll send you a letter, but no, we don't feel like doing it right now? Or...
Well, we'd, in the instruction, we thought we'd have a beginning date to start negotiations that we, with negotiations. I mean, we can't guarantee that, you know, New Report is going to say, great, we'll sign in two weeks. We don't know how long that they could, as I mentioned earlier today, they could be intransigent. We don't, we don't know. But, but, but we have to, we have to get the, get the train moving at least. So we, we thought we almost say almost is immediately.
Right. And Ross, just to kind of clarify, so it isn't, you know, it isn't the Select Board that's ordering the Board of Water Commissioners. Actually, it's instructed from town meeting. So, so, you know, we, along with your thoughts, will be making a recommendation through a motion for town meeting to vote on. And if, if town meeting votes on that affirmatively, then that is an instruction.
The town is all, yeah.
But it, no, I appreciate everything you're saying. We'll just proceed in whatever that you think is appropriate, and we're focused on accomplishing. I don't know that anybody from the FinComs going to react negatively to what you put together.
Well, we're just trying to like, make it so that the voters aren't confused. Should we have, I guess we should nail this down right now. Should, should, like, one person read the whole thing, or should we have one person reads Part B, one person does Part A, or, I mean, a different person? I don't know. I think that, I think we should sort of have sort of two things that, so that they understand, we want to do this, and we want to do that. But also, we sort of want to be, have some kumbaya, and all be, all be in it together so that, so that the voters don't, don't get confused. We don't want one more than the other, or anything like that.
So Wendy had this question. Ask Chris, at least, speak up for one, or maybe both. I thought Chris is someone that certainly could speak to the long-range plan, but he could possibly do both of them. To answer this question, I mean, you know, that was the thought that he wrote to your friend.
I would think having one person make a statement.
So it's a little, it's going to be confusing that the motion in the FinCom booklet is substantially difficult, different from what's going to be.
The more as I understand it, I didn't quite get it. And you're going to modify it significantly. So maybe you might want to have a hand on the table.
We were going to do that.
Okay, because the site, if you get the motion in the booklet, we all know that Casey being here is, is the motion that's written on the floor. But I guess if you change it, it won't be confusing not to have physically the evidence to look at.
So as to who speaks to the motion, did we make a decision on that, or is that...
I think it should come from the Select Board.
Yeah, I agree. I think it should come from the Select Board. And I think we can make that decision early today.
Wait, in terms of who?
Yeah.
I'll get the sticks. We usually, I usually get sticks from the ground and pick them up. Wendy always loses.
The Select Board will rewrite it, except, and then they'll...
And just to, I think, Krista, what you said about it being very different, I think what we're, I think the board is basically reordering.
And condensing.
And condensing of it. But the intent is really, is very similar.
Yeah, the first problem you're going to have is, this is the first significant time that the Water Department is being given significant instructions. So I think that citizens are really going to want to see what it is.
So I think that the citizens are really gonna wanna see what it is.
Yeah.
It's gonna be different with the simple, so you gotta be very careful.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that's for a lot of people that are giving instructions first of all.
Mm-hmm.
Well, actually, we did that a year ago, but yeah, that that was the first time, and and.
It was shorter than Sweden.
Yeah.
Shorter.
Shorter.
Okay, that, we're good. That's great.
Thank you.
Um, okay. I I had a question about um the Church Street um uh debt uh borrowing, uh let me see. So it says that um to the second line of the of the motion on the Church Street, it says to pay a portion of the cost of replacing da da da. Well, the the does that imply that the the two point seven million is only a portion of the cost to me, like, I can see a voter um in getting that, getting that message.
But but with the ARPA money that's already being put into it, I think that's.
I understand, but but it, they they're gonna say, well, okay, you put ARPA money in to buy the stuff, and now you're saying the construction is gonna be two point seven plus. It's saying a portion. I I I think we have to be careful that someone says, well, you mean, you don't even have a good idea that it two point seven is enough, it it just, that worries me.
Change that to remain your own instead of portions. Remain your responsibility. But but at the end of the day, so let's, let's say this is put out to bid next uh you know, February, and let's say the bids are due uh mid-April of twenty twenty four, and let's say the low bid comes in and two point seven isn't enough. That difference is gonna need to be made up in order for the town to award a contract, so whether that's from um additional borrowing authorization, or whether that's a transfer of water retained earnings or water stabilization, there's got, you know, we can't.
Oh, I know, I know we can. I'm just, I'm just saying it as a, that that we should be we should be re- ready to answer that question, that we have the best knowledge that we have fro- from the from the engineering firm is that this is, we had a revised estimate of of the construction costs and and this is what we have at the moment, but um, just so you know, paying a portion, someone could say, well, is the whole thing gonna be five million? We don't, we hope not, but the the I I know it is what it is, but it just, we should be aware of that, that somebody could could question that.
Yeah, even if it is a question, we might wanna explain that that it's been um uh supplemented by by, you know, the ten point five thousand dollar harbor funds.
No, no, it, no, it it it's not gonna knock that down.
No, no, it isn't. That's why I said it's supplement.
Okay. But to Angus's point, if the bid comes in, it's at at for the construction comes in at three million, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen if you borrow the material and then the bid's coming in five million? What are we gonna do?
That's a that's.
Maybe we sell the pipe and make a profit.
Now, that, that's, I mean, the the, the intent of, you know, as you know, uh, well, and and everyone, the uh number had been two point five, and then we we did get, we and I'm hoping the engineer would get us an updated number, and they did just last week, and they said they thought two point seven was a better number for, you know, I, we just have to hope that that's a conservative enough number, because it, you know, the whole point of seeking borrowing authorization this cycle is to make sure that we don't end up in a situation having expended federal ARPA funds on a project that doesn't end up happening. So if if what you're describing you know, came true, and there was a bid that was so far above, and the town decided not to fund it, that would be a huge problem, and it's it's a fair question.
Well, well, there is act, I think there's an easy solution to it. It's not any one that I think we would, at least the board probably wouldn't find it palatable. But there's roughly another seven hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds.
Yeah, that, well, at this point, yeah.
Right, at this point, right, that's fine. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't know for sure whether or not any of that anymore that will be allocated. We're committed before we know, before we have to pay out of it, but.
Yeah, man, I don't think it would be our intent to actually expend any ARPA funds until the last kind of a- as late as we could. It wouldn't be this spring, it wouldn't be the summer. Uh, you know, but if we're, if part of the intent of purchasing the pipe separately is to deal with the, you know, thirty week lead time with the, with the delivery of the pipe um that would bring us to mid to late fall, if the intent was to have the pipe in hand by, let's say, May first of next year. So that would mean there would be a period of time that the town theoretically would have expended money um, a a lot of money uh to buy the pipe um prior to having done the bid process. But the problem is if we don't do that, and we don't initiate the bidding to for the pipe until we initiate the construction, and then people can't deliver the pipe for thirty weeks because of um supply chain.
Construction's against us.
Then the construction, they won't honor their quote for that long. So it's it's a, it it's a fair question, but it's not an easy answer.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is, it's so you know, we've been told lead time is thirty weeks now. Do we know in six months, lead times could be, we we have no idea. You know, there there could be billions of dollars of federal money being poured in for infrastructure, fuck, huh, when that happened. Um, and there could be this huge demand for pipe, um, you know, far in excess of what of current demand. So the lead time maybe will be forty, I have no idea, but well, you know.
And previously debated doing this, and I think we were at that time pretty much in agreement that was the right thing to go forward.
Right. Well, I I guess what I'm thinking, Angus, is maybe we don't wait until the last possible minute to to expend ARPA funds. But it it might actually.
If if it, if it passes town meeting, I I think that the 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 Water Department would be all on board with full s- full steam ahead to get, to get in line, to get the stuff made in action.
Right.
But portion, that that term portion does uh does seem misleading. Maybe you could just say, hey, the estimated construction cost or the estimated installation cost, so please the opportunity go back to the well.
Have having the word estimated is good. Yeah, that's good. Is it, is, would that be okay, Tim, to say that?
Like that word, Tim, do you ever thought of that?
Yeah, I I mean, I I understand the concern, and obviously, the the warrant said um a portion of the cost of replacing the water mains. I do, you know, I think that's a a reasonable concern to to think that voters are gonna look at this and say, well, geez, is that ninety-five percent, or is that five percent? What, you know, what's this gonna cost? Um and I think you, to say that pay a portion of the anticipated or estimated cost of replacing the water mains. It's fine, and I think you you'll need, somebody will need to explain uh the the timeline and the reason for some of the uncertainty, but that the the two point seven plus the ARPA funds, you know, is expected to cover X percent of the cost.
Most of that's in the rationale, talks about the ARPA funds and the timeline. So if they read the rationale, you've got most of that explained.
Okay.
Other than if the bid went on with two point seven, that's not gonna count.
It's not a portion, right? This is the full
Correct.
The installation.
Because
The installation.
With our, this with our, with our best information at the moment, yeah.
This article doesn't treat the material purchase. So the scope of this article is the installation. And it's, this sum is for the full installation, full estimated installation. So that portion word is misleading.
So we couldn't, couldn't we just delete that? Would it say to pay the installation costs?
You'll just say to pay the cost. Yeah. Wh- why is portion in there as a value?
Well, I I think the language um originally came from I know it's been reviewed by bond counsel, so that we can't change the the article language, obviously, as opposed to, in terms of the motion, you know, anything comes out of tonight, we just need to make sure bond counsel is but satisfied with it. So they they might have, they might, that word of I I don't, I don't know.
Or they may even have a suggestion that we have thought of that in the data.
Mm-hmm.
But it just goes to what you guys end up doing for language anyway.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you don't have to comment anything on that portion.
Okay.
All right, we go back to six.
So so just to tie this up, it sounds like uh people, if bond counsel's okay with it, would be happier if it said um two point seven from Water Enterprise Account to pay the estimated costs of rather than a portion of, your bond counsel's good with that.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, Wendy wants to go back to six.
Yeah, so um so this is not a budget that we would call hold on, right? We talked about the seventeen hundred for the stipends coming out. So this is not, that's not the appropriate way to propose that. So we would just have to vote this motion down.
No, they, they, there is no, this is um, that would be the place to to.
Yeah, you would, you would wanna make an amended note.
Amendment. Yeah.
Right. So so would this motion be read, or would an amended motion be read?
I this, I think this would be read, and.
And then I I Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to change this.
Is that legit, Mike? I mean, if the motion's on on the floor, you have to vote on that motion before you amend it, right?
No.
No, okay.
You you, someone would make a motion to amend and then would hopefully do it in writing.
Mm-hmm.
And then there would be a vote on the motion to amend. If it passes then the amended motion becomes the main motion to be voted on.
Okay.
If it fails, then the original one.
Okay.
Now, depending on who's reading the motion, you you could theoretically change the, you know, cha- you know take it out from the beginning. It's no, it's not necessary for you to to include that. If you're the one making the motion, you could say, I I don't include that. But we're voting the entire sum, right, Tim? So that if the board decides that they want to spend the money that way regardless of the fact that you've taken out the seventeen hundred, it could still be done.
But it stipulates the individual amounts.
Uh, my estimation is that we're voting one sum, and the the rest is simply explanatory.
Well, ju- just as you make a motion and and admit the part about seven hundred dollars for Water Commissioner's stipends, why wouldn't making your motion, why wouldn't you amend the sum, the the one sum?
You can, but the the point is that they can move between the budget line items and then do it.
But I I'm trying to square that, exactly, with the with the salary wages that set with the select board under the Town Manager Act, I I would think it would fall under this is it wagered? I think it's wagered.
Yeah, it says it includes seventeen hundred for water.
Right. So I think that that is something that is under the uh select board's uh authority, that if the seventeen hundred was removed, I I I don't think they it could then be.
Hey, I don't, I'm trying to think if that was ever on the June list of things that we vote on. And I would say
it has been. I don't know if it has been every year. I know it has been some years.
Which which was the seventeen hundred?
Yeah.
No, I don't think the seventeen hundred would.
Hey, he's asking for, I've got it, when they vote the wage schedule in June, it's terrible, it's on anything. And and it has been on on at least some, if not all.
So so you have to change three eighteen as well as the one oh six oh. Did you ever read this?
Right.
So um if we, if the uh the motion stated zero for Water Commissioner stipends, would they then be bound by that, by that motion, by that motion in in town meeting? Well, I guess I'd ask town council.
So I I think, well, there's a lot going on here. I think if you, if you amended that seventeen hundred to zero I don't think they would be pro- are are you asking, Mike, whether they would be precluded from paying any stipends to the the commissioners at that point?
And so that, that, if that's the vote of town meeting, would they be then precluded?
I don't think so. I mean, this is just to appropriate certain sums of money, or a sum of money for their um for their operating expenses, and if you allocated zero to stipends um, you know, if there's another source of, or a another appropriation or another way to give them a stipend, I I don't think a vote here would preclude that.
But hey, Tim, but but that's included, I mean, it specified of of which three hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred forty-eight is for salaries and wages, which includes seventeen hundred for Water Commissioners stipends. So if instead you said of which three hundred and
Seventy.
Three hundred and seventy thousand one hundred forty-eight for salaries and wages, which includes zero for Water Commissioners. Isn't that pretty specific at that point?
You just, I I mean, it would, it would just be saying that the the commissioners aren't are getting an appropriation at all. You know, but again, I I don't know, I guess what's the, what what is the, what are we trying to accomplish here? I, that would help, help me to understand.
So there there was a a request to the board um that they discontinued that practice, because no other boards or committees in towns in town do that, and um the commitment was made to discuss it, and it hasn't happened.
Then then what I would recommend is just m- amending these figures. This is you know, it's obviously in the warrant as printed, but there's no, no reason you can't um down, you know, reduce those figures by seventeen hundred, you know, the overall, the one oh six oh as well as the three one eight eight four eight figure um to reflect that, and then delete the set, the the seventeen hundred for stipends, that clause. There's no reason why you can't make, amend this motion to state that, and then um make the explanation after the motion during the discussion period as to why you're, why you're modifying it.
Okay.
Good.
But as Mike McCarron said, make sure it's in writing.
So if if you're gonna amend, yes, if you amend, you know, whether it's, it depends on who, who's gonna be, usually traditionally, the Water Commissioners read this motion.
We're, we're, this um this year, Mike, we're gonna go back to the old system of the park doing the park things and water doing the water thing. So so they would, I'm assuming, gonna read it this way.
Well, when you do the amendment, make sure you've got all the numbers aligned and everything else, so Mike has a record of that, you're right.
Jim, Jim, whenever.
Jim has a record. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we good on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, septic, um, no one ever understands this, no one wants to, um. Uh, any further issues? Uh, are we uh, so Article fourteen, um so that everybody is is on the, is on the same page there, so that the it's, the motion is going to say um seven oh uh, seven oh five thousand. However, the actual and that's going to confuse the voters, because in ultimately, if they don't read the whole, all the way down the motion, that that this is not gonna happen unless there's additional cons- um contributions of no less than um Contribution of no less than um three hundred and fifty five thousand, but but the way. The land grant. Uh. Possible land grant. Uh a grant to the town to to get some uh help with with purchasing this property. Has to say the the total total amount in in the motion, so that's that. We we have to be willing, everybody has to to uh. Understand that and and be able to um explain that on on the floor of town meeting.
Yeah, this this was definitely one of the trickier motions to write for the reasons that Archie. Stated because throughout the process to this point, three fifty has been the number, that's the number of the booklet, that's the number. And if you net out seven oh five minus three fifty five that's required to be received, that's three fifty. So but but Archie's right, that people will see seven oh five, including, you know, we wanna talk about this tonight, the finance committee here, this is the first time you're hearing this. You know, why does it say seven oh five? It says seven oh five because the land grant administrators have said that that. That in order to be eligible for the land grant, the the uh town meeting article has to. Have the total agreed purchase price, not just the contribution. So it's really no different than uh the three historical property surveys that we funded with C P D A funds where we appropriated thirty thousand. Knowing we're gonna get fifteen back from a massive historical, it's bigger numbers, but it's conceptual, the same thing. Archie, I think you mentioned you had recalled there was a land purchase from some years ago. With a similar circumstance where the town had to vote a total amount, even though it wasn't, it was paid.
Correct, yeah.
But that wasn't the amount that was approved by the C P C.
No. Yeah, I mean, it's.
What, is that an issue?
Uh it'd be a good thing to bring up at their meeting next Thursday, yeah.
Okay, if Tim, is that an issue if? If the application for this funding to the C P C did not reflect that?
Well, the appropriated amount is still three fifty.
Right, but they didn't ask for five sixty two from the undesigned fund.
No, no, and that was where drafting the motion was tricky, cause I I was going through old motions and they always specify in the bucket or buckets the money's coming from. And that was difficult to do, cause those numbers have to total seven oh five, even though there's no intent. Or or even authorization to expend three fifty, the way this is written.
I think, yeah, so to to answer your question, Wendy, I don't see that as a problem.
Okay.
But we should definitely, you know, share it with them and. Make sure they, if they have questions, they can ask them, you know, at next Thursday's meeting or in the meantime.
Maybe also at the at the question and answer uh forums that we have. Later on in the week, uh if no one asks that question, we'd re-hit up just so that it it. It gets reinforced and maybe gets out in the media so people understand that ahead of.
What makes the motion?
Probably the select board, I think we brought it, right? And the C P C.
But but I'm sorry, but the the rationale in both it's it's fine, but what ends up happening is. What I'm getting at is uh sort of what Archie was. Practice on the explanation. Because these things can get dicey in the explaining and. This will be a complicated one, people, some people read rationale, others don't, they don't rely on whoever's. The chief of the board.
My my.
Angus, um we have an appraisal.
We do.
This amount, okay.
Yeah, for example, five, yes.
Okay.
Two. Came up exactly the same.
All right, so I guess uh.
Can't say that laugh.
We should, we should put that into the record of that.
So on on article thirteen. The motion. There's printed in article thirteen. I guess of the warrant. But why are the numbers not here?
Uh just for, I I took this from last last year, so it makes it more concise. But it could specify the numbers, and certainly if the numbers wanted to be different than what's in the warrant, if they want to be lower, for instance. That would wanna be part of the motion.
Okay, I think I saw higher numbers, I mean. Was that from the C P C administrator or from today? Seven oh five was the total.
Seven oh five.
For the total.
For the total annual revenues?
Yeah.
I I I.
All right, so so the numbers can be different. In time. Yeah, none of them are higher, yeah, so I need to.
Angus, I I would suggest that we when you say, so it said printed in article thirteen of the warrant, say printed in the article thirteen of the annual company warrant. Page such and such a date, they specified exactly in the place we applied it.
Okay, we're moving down sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, anyone got the kids about though?
You know, I just wanted to point something out that that we never discussed, and I'm not, this is an a bone, but it's um. Uh on sixteen, the sidewalk, um. We. We never, and this is me, if it's anybody else, never asked the question, was there an electric alternative? Which there is not for the sidewalk, we have a select board policy regarding um any. Uh acquisitions of new equipment after the beginning of FY twenty four. Need to be electric unless there's no reasonable um. Uh electric, you know, voice, um which there isn't in this case. But we just, it occurred to me that we've never even asked that question, I mean, we know the answer, that it doesn't exist, but um.
You're saying after fiscal year.
Yeah, after the beginning of FY twenty four, any um. Uh any equipment is supposed to be electric.
It begins during fiscal year twenty.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think the question was raised at FinCom.
Oh, was it? Okay, okay, great, thanks, yeah, okay.
That's a good thing to remember, though. So that starts this fiscal year.
And is that on the uh. Got the request form? Is that a place to put it?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's a good idea.
I mean, right?
Yeah. Yeah, no, 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 that's a good point, yeah, that would make sense.
Uh anything we need to talk about the the two um to uh the. Was the the solar bylaw, or is there anything? Uh.
So that.
We need to know about that.
I was just curious about the reason for the changes, I didn't look at the comments.
Okay, uh you wanna summarize us too, it's it's to to do with basically requiring the proper removal and disposal of. Solar, ground mounted solar after the. Uh after it passed its life cycle?
Yes, and Wendy, you're talking about why did they move further amendments to the.
Uh no, it just.
Or you're wondering why there's not a rationale, you know?
No, I think um there's a lot of new language added, and the final sentence was struck, so I think maybe it's just. Recurring to something else, but you have to be writing it all in.
Okay, so maybe, Tim, you can speak to that, so yeah, I I had. Taken a crack at uh the initial draft motion.
Yeah.
And and uh Tim.
Not, not so much.
So, I you know, sometimes it's good to be concise, other times it's not possible to be concise, and in this case. I thought, you know, is my conclusion that there the only way to. Tell voters what they're voting on, what changes are going to be made to the zoning bylaw, is to actually spell them out. Um in the um in the in the motion. Um and what I put back in there, Wendy, is just uh basically re- reiterates what is printed in the warrant. And it's, it is a little convoluted, but um there's a bunch of. There's several different sections of the bylaw that are being changed, and you know, there's, this is the. Honestly, the clearest way that I could come up with to describe those changes, um and there should be. A copy of these changes that that's on file with the town clerk. So that if people are are interested, they can go and and review it on their own.
So I I was talking about article twenty two, the solar bylaw, is that, okay. Okay.
But articles from the three is ironically more concise.
I think this is most substantive changes, right?
Article twenty three is was so lengthy, I I think it would be cruel to to force somebody to to read that.
Or to have to listen to it.
Yeah, yeah, I think people would 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 leave after about ten minutes of it before they got through it.
Officially, since won't this be the very last article, taking up too many is taken up in order, this would be the very last article. Other than maybe the state flag, which at some point tonight, we didn't talk about when when you're.
Um should you, when you say uh available to view the town board, should you then have a specific document? The the title it, so that we know that's what the new revision will be. Remind West, because I you you said you're gonna have one.
We do, yeah, we do have it at Conde stands, um and it's on the town website, so does it have a specific title? Cause if so, we should definitely put it into the.
I mean, even if it's just West River's old bylaw as amended. April twenty fourth, you know, two thousand twenty three.
Yep, that's a good suggestion.
Did FinCom have any? Questions around the.
So, yeah, actually, I've seen some language in the draft motion for article twenty two. Referring to on file, I'm here for the county clerk's office. Which I'm not seeing in the draft motion for article twenty three, which it feels like should be there.
Yeah.
You agree, Tim?
The last sentence, say on file.
Yeah, that's a good catch, Angus, um that should be in there. Assuming assuming that that's where it's located.
It is, definitely it is. So so you don't have the markup, but he needs to drop that, so. Okay, we'll restore that language or something like that. All right, is that do it for the annual?
Yeah.
As far as article one on the special with snow and ice adds up today, the the uh deficit is thirty six, three eighty four. Uh and that's based on a report just from today. We added twenty thousand on that, Jenny, do you have a sense of uh? You know, I I know you've been working with Wayne and Kate and Brad Street on um. You know, just knowing that we'll have a firm number ahead of town meeting.
I don't have any additional information other than at the twenty thousand.
Okay, yeah, they had estimated that they thought there might be up to about twenty thousand of unbilled snow and ice. So that's where I came up with the number of fifty six, three eighty four, I just added twenty thousand to what's the known deficit. And that's what I put into the booklet, cause I didn't know what else to do.
Is this one that we're gonna go on?
Uh yeah, typically, FinCom would would recommend it, I guess, I can't remember, when they voted on the Florida town meeting. Is that when they would vote their recommendation?
You can have a meeting like five minutes before the town meeting.
The number of firm now.
No, it's not.
Yeah, so let's go.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I think typically FinCom, recently FinCom has met briefly.
It's probably be fifty six thousand more. And they added the budget and it hasn't even snowed.
Well, these are unbilled, all right.
Unpossible unbilled, like so somebody hasn't put in there.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, thirty six above the the budget of one fifty. That's where we are with with, yeah, very well snow, but uh.
So we did one fifty, so this would now be two oh six. So, yeah.
Yeah. So, as Wayne's explained, the the storms that we've had are very costly, they're not allowed to know, but they're very costly to do standings. All night long.
Oh, I I know, I but it's 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 unsettling.
Okay, well, I was just trying to relax.
I agree with that, see that way. There's no snow, you know, what would I do?
It was apparently ice. Okay.
So would somebody from FinCom make an amended motion on article two? Are you planning to just?
Sixty versus eighteen.
And this actually would be good to help Mike understand, cause you probably haven't had the time to read the booklet, I'm sure, cause you just got it today, so yes.
I know, I understand, cause you have different categories and some people want. But the idea is the sixty thousand is the.
No, one and two, it's category one and two.
Yeah, that is that is the higher one, yes.
So if you only do category one.
It would be like eighteen.
Then it would be. Or it would be eighteen thousand less, or no.
No, about eighteen thousand.
We were very stingy on that.
Okay.
For three weeks of snow and ice, why?
So somebody from FinCom couldn't, well, they would make.
They they give a recommendation. Yeah, we give a recommendation. And then, and then, and then emotion is made. I assume that, I'll be like this, the board, the select board makes the motion, and then. If someone on the FinCom wishes to amend it, then we then say, I, you know, I move to amend the. On article, you know, to federal economy to that number. Yeah, so we have a vote on, well, we have actually explanation as to why an amendment is appropriate. Uh come in with vote on the amendment, again, same thing, if the if the amendment passes, then that because the amended motion becomes the main motion. If the amendment fails, the main motion as originally read say is voted on.
We, so FinCom voted eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars to three fifty five.
So we gotta remember. All all five of the members who voted supported either. Tier one only or tier one and tier two, so we're not against the program, so uh we may have further discussions for what we wanna do on the floor. We might keep that as a surprise toy. It was essentially a split vote, even Steven, so who knows what we're gonna do on the floor.
Well, Rick's gonna dress up as an embalash.
And 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 we'll 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 dress up as lumberjack.
I thought you were impressive as the orcan man.
That's, I think it's right, I don't like that. But we'll we'll see what.
Uh, any, um. Any issue with Article five? Okay.
Um, just a point of information on Article four for the thirty-one dollar place study. Uh, this primarily for FinCom or anyone else who's who's listening. Uh, the RFQ that was sent out, that has have a response date of Friday, the twenty-first of April. So we do expect, you know, assuming we get one or more qualified proposals, we do expect to have a number. You know, but we will not have awarded in a contract or vetted any of the proposals, so I think we would stick with the. Fifty thousand dollar amount, but just so you're, just so you know, uh, we 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 do expect that we hope to receive multiple. Proposals that that Friday before that.
Article six, um, that's gonna be hard to say that water, the national meter, that's a, I don't know. So we do a tongue twister, okay?
About Article twelve.
When you address that, I had a request with Wayne, potentially, if the Whittier students could be able to participate in. Accommodating the repair of that building, whereas Wayne is moving on. I just don't want that.
I I I spoke to Mark last week, Mark Marlowe, and he has already been in touch with Whittier.
We just had to change in garden.
Yeah, 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 no, definitely, they've they've already been attached with Whittier.
So Article twelve, Rob, you had a question about that? Oh, some, some.
So the board's actually gonna take that up after this.
Okay, we'll know later, okay, great.
Article thirteen, I I just noticed there is a error in there because it refers to stabilization, but the sort is pre-packed. Uh, now it would be closed down to the general fund account, not the stabilization fund. And, you know, that is correct, that's how it's been all along, and that's how it's shown in the in the table in the FinCom booklet, so just in drafting a motion. Uh, put in stabilization by accident.
Yes, in the rationale, booklet, there's no total number for that. There's twenty-five.
Remember, we wanted to explain that you can't get a cruise of twenty-five thousand.
They're using that money in detail, like you said. No reasonable person would see that what the total cost is.
And and previously appropriated amounts too, so so it's about, it's sixty something.
References forty thousand carry. So you have forty in the.
You obviously, the FinCom, when they give a recommendation. You could update your recommendation from the from the book.
Well, there's no, there's a quote for the cruiser in the, all the track materials for the article. Uh, so it just, it's not in the booklet narrative, but that is on, we do have that.
But I think whatever that number is, it's. Yeah, yeah, that's, that needs to be explained. We follow. Mike, um, you just raised an interesting point, um. We haven't been reading each round now.
You can, I mean, I guess in. No, no, the the, I will ask, for for money, I. I will ask, what is the recommendation of the finance? I believe in the last couple of years, in order to truncate it, they just simply say that they vote in the favor. In the past, yeah, they have read. You know, so it's up to the, it's up to the finance, but as how they want to approach.
So sometimes rationale may be important. After the recommendation, other times we haven't been doing that.
But I mean, you you're you're saying the rec, you're saying the rationale would be your recommendation.
Well, one second. We make a recommendation. We have, and then, and then, sometimes, we might want to go on a little rationale or explanation, other times we may not. Back to meter.
Anyways, so, yeah, the article back up there is the quote, uh, for the police cruiser, it was sixty-three, four thirty-two. Was the quoted amount, that was in in December sixteen. Uh, so that, that, yeah, that quote was a sixty-day quote, so I need to talk to the wire as to whether the. Whether the wire that's specific price or, you know, like they wrote more than that by the time they get around back straight. Paying for it. But its orders of magnitude is sixty-five thousand.
Is, Angus, do you think Park and Rec will do the motion on the, uh, defense?
I think they'd be happy to, okay.
Any further questions on the special?
Twenty-one thousand fifteen thousand nine nine hundred sixty.
Oh, that's a typo, okay, I caught that in the warrant, that was a typo in the warrant that I caught before the warrant, it's it's it didn't change. It's still nine nine sixty. There were the two part contract articles, one was fifteen, one was ninety-nine sixty, and that. Was a carryover from an earlier draft.
Change to the ninety-nine sixty?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the booklet, it's ninety-nine sixty. Yeah, yeah, that was, that's one of the things, at this stage of the process. This language is in four different places, it's in the draft warrant, it's in the draft FinCom booklet, it's in. So that's, no, no, it didn't change, uh, but thank you, that's, now it's corrected here.
Where, where are we?
Uh, in, basically, Article fifteen, our special, the actual number is ninety-nine sixty.
It on binding issues?
Oh, right, so.
What's your pleasure?
If someone wishes to make a record, well, number one is, would it be a town board or a president?
It's a, it's a citizen's petition.
But it's not, but it's not a citizen's petition.
It was filed, but it was filed late, so it it can't be an official. Go on as a official warrant item.
I could recognize an individual who could make a motion for a redemption, non-binding, obviously. And extended that to pleasure of town meetings, someone makes that motion, then I move to. To to make the following resolution, for the town to adopt the following resolution, written out. If there's a second, then it will be open. If someone, what is it, base a motion to dissolve town meeting, well, then that motion has priority, has to be voted on.
So you're saying this would be last, I mean?
But, it is, it is when someone I would recognize someone, I would probably not recognize anyone out of order. Of the, of the articles. I I would, basically, unless town meeting were to vote to take articles out of order. But there'd have to be a priority motion in order to do that. Um, but other than that, this, the town operator controls. Which motion, you know, the the odd, the order of the articles as they're gonna be voted on.
So, so after the final vote, you know, vote on the last town meeting article. If somebody wants to make that motion, they have to quickly. Uh, get your attention to make the motion.
Right. Or have gotten his attention ahead of time, that pay attention to it. What I would recommend is perhaps, uh, ask Gaby.
Well, I think what Mike was just saying is that if somebody else speaks up first and there's a motion on the floor. Then, then, then they'll just adjourn, I think. You can call the motion out, probably. Is that correct or is it not correct?
What do you mean?
Could, can you address the person who's who's spoken with you beforehand and indicated they have a motion. Um, for a non-binding, um, resolution.
Which they should.
Right, and can you then reach out to them after the final vote, or do they have to proactively reach out to you? And and beat whoever else might be trying to get.
The question just beating is, is there's a counter motion to dissolve the town meeting, then that motion has precedent.
Is there an attempt to let these people speak out then?
Oh, they have, they could make a motion, they just. Right, if I recognize it, and they make, I I I move to tell them about the non-binding resolution for the following. And if that's second, then that motion is on the floor, so I I suggest that. Ask Gaby be informed, and that Mike, or you could be available to Pat to take her through how they might get this to the floor. Because none of us sitting here, I I think, none of us sitting here, that. He wants to make the motion. Yeah, so I I would, I would just ask that, sure, you'd be able to talk to Mike and arrange the best way to do it. Because he's the buyer, so.
So if it was supported by a committee, could it be presented as as one of the reports at the beginning?
Um, town reports is Article two.
Yeah.
And they, and the Article two is traditionally left open for the entire meeting. Oftentimes, we have the list, you know, read at. Tom, you know, beginning of the meeting, but oftentimes, they are reserved to give their report prior to, and obviously. It, but like Casey, it's it's really helpful if, if any town board wishes to make a report before a particular. Article, that they give me a heads up.
Yeah. Jim's on it.
Hey, Chris. Will you get up, Tom?
Oh, good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, I think your, uh, work here is done, so we'll do a, uh. I'll do a markup just to clean up with everything we talked about and and reset these around to everybody.
Great, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
So were you here for for something else?
Make sure I knew what was going on for county meeting, it's in my support or. Figure out how you all do it here, so that I can be aware.
How how we do it here in the country?
How the sausage is made.
A little different, you know, all towns do a little different. Process that I was wanting to.
So we did, you probably saw the agenda, I did include your town banner report, which we've been doing, which is great. So I didn't know if the board, I I know Rick had a suggestion, I don't know if you want to take that out of order, what was due here, or. It's more of a future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take it out of order?
Yes. Yeah, that's right, yeah, I moved that we take, uh, the, uh, I think that was, uh. I don't know, town plan report out of order.
Second?
Oh, it's a favor.
Hi, so, um, my question, I posed it in email to Angus, I'm wondering if the board would want to talk about this. Um, before town meeting or not, and that's not critical at all, but, um. Uh, the, um, the soul or the, um, wireless bylaw, and it's gonna be recon, you know, the. The board, the planning board will be reconsidering that, you know, reviewing it, uh, for potential changes.
County councils, I think they have it, and they said they would review it as soon as we're ready.
Okay, great.
They would make recommendations, and then the board would.
Okay. So, one thing that, um, I don't know if we've ever had a conversation as a board, the select board, but I I know I. Individually, Angus and I have talked about it, and possibly with other people as well, you know, individual conversations with the town manager. Have, um, discussed the potential for at some point doing a. Wireless coverage study of the town. Um, and it seemed to me if there was consideration, and that's basically to to figure out. Where are the weak spots, because there are a lot of weak spots in West Newbury, and and, you know, so there are two issues. Number one is providing service, uh, to as many of the residents in town as possible at their homes. And and to minimize drop spots while you're traveling through town. Um, probably more important is having service at your house, though, because many people just don't have landlines anymore. Um, and secondly, it's a potential revenue source for the town if if there are wireless, um. Um, towers with antennas put up on town, on municipal land, so, um, the idea was to, um. Would it make sense to do that wireless coverage study. Um, prior to the planning board taking it on? So, so that's, this is a thought, maybe, maybe worth bouncing off.
Yeah, it's a good thought, too.
Yeah.
For them to discuss, are you aware of any grants that help municipalities do that?
Uh, I am not, um, I know Angus had some experience, well, close to ten years ago in West, when you were in Westbury. I have no idea about grants.
I can check the.
It was a locally funded study in Westbury.
What was the?
Well, at the time, we were dealing with a couple of the council towers, and so we were working with David Maxx, who was the consultant, and he was modeling. He was kind of here, they're modeling, and I I don't recall that it cost us a whole lot more. Because he was already, and we gathered a lot of the data, well, we've gathered all the data of the records of where the existing facilities were, what height they were, what frequency. So we kind of did all the legwork, gave him that, he put it into his computer models, and it generated. Kind of, you know, mapping of where the gaps are, and it was, it was very helpful to then overlay that with town on sites. Which of those town on sites might be at the right elevation, and and it was exactly what Rick's describing, so.
Didn't, didn't we have, have companies done that already for Pike Save and also for?
Probably, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. There was, there, there was a petition to. Uh, designate a portion of, well, it was an article, to designate a portion of. Obviously, uh, next to, uh, as for studies, and I believe that. Companies did do the studies, Gary Bill would have that information, and also for, um, Frank Hill. And, uh, by town meeting, voted it down, did not give.
Big, big town.
Big, well, I mean, you had a bunch of.
No, voted down, voted down the tower, be- because it was near the page school and so forth.
And then, and then, voted down Frank Hill too, because, well, they voted that down, they were in a voting down movement. But so, but there might, there might actually be, and Gary Bill might have access to it. Um, the studies that were done, because I know they did, you know, the, um, height studies and, you know, the, you know, how much. Coverage that would be, but that was done by, um, Verizon and, um. Yeah. No.
So, I mean, I was kind of following that con, and I didn't realize that there was ever a study provided by. They, they, they proposed, uh, tower location.
They did, but they did.
Yeah, probably for their own consumption, I don't know.
I don't know if we ever got, I know the Gary Bill.
But we had, we had like an estimated height and what it would look like, and all, and the whole nine yards.
One of the things, why you're in the planning board, will the planning board be making the zoning particles? One of the things why you're in the planning board, will the planning board be making the zoning article?
Will they, the motion? I, I believe Sam, I, I believe our building inspector will be making the one for.
Okay, um, one of the things that they're gonna have to do is to put into the record. That, uh, the planning board has given its recommendations to the board section.
Yes.
So that could put on the record so that then town meeting knows that that statutory requirement has taken place. And, and, uh, they, they, they would expect, what I will do is, is that if, when the, uh, planning board member reads the motion. I will then ask them, has the planning board given his recommendation to the town? They answer in the affirmative, then they can go into the discussion.
Yeah, that's just kind of the permission I was here for. And I'll ask the, uh, and I'll ask him about the, the study and. Do a little homework to see what.
Great, thanks. That was one side, they're back wrong.
Okay, our next article is, uh. Request the use of ARPA funds for the page school HVAC replacement. So, um. Angus, do we have to, just to, before we get into the nuts and bolts of it, but, um. Do we have to make a vote that we want all of our ARPA funds to be the. Revenue replacement? Do, do we have to make some kind of vote? Yeah, and that's how we had filed it with the, cause we have to do annual reports, actually, we have one due at the end of the month. We did one last April, um, which didn't report any spending, but, but we had to state. What was going to be revenue replacement. Uh, Jenny, I see you're still on. I, I'm not aware of any vote the board needs to take that they haven't already taken on the revenue replacement. Are you?
I'm not. No, I think we're good there.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, it's a continuation of what you talked about two weeks ago, uh, the idea of, uh, funding the school HVAC with our. Funding and, uh, then we got the advice that the Buy American requirement does not apply because it would be. Uh, revenue replacement.
Wayne and I met with, um. Uh, B two Q, who is the, um. Company that's doing the HEAC controls upgrade here and they're also going to be doing the solar site feasibility study. Um, and we met with, um, uh, Tom Banks, B two Q at Page School last week. To look at, or him to take a look at it with the idea of, um. Uh, basically providing a, a specification proposal, um, as opposed to having vendors who wanted to, you know. Who were, would propose to sell us a system, um, having B two Q give us a proposal, what it would cost for them to, um, specify. The, um, the system, the replacement system, um, and, um. I don't know if that affects this discussion all, but just so you know, that's sort of part of the, you know, part of the equation at this point, or potentially part of the equation at this point. Is having them actually do a specification, might actually, you know, come out with a, um, sort of a more, um. Idealized solution.
So would that be funded from this article?
Um, it wouldn't, but, 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 but there's no commitment at this point. They're just going to give a proposal, this is what it would cost us for you to spec. For us to specify this, um, and, and, um.
So is that gonna, is that gonna add cost?
Well, the thought was that it might actually reduce cost and, 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 um, and, you know, sort of optimize what spec. Um, you know, using, using the, you know, you, the most brains to design the system. And, and, you know, then we don't count the vendor having sized everything. And that's not necessarily a bad way to go. That most of the time, you know, the vendor does size the system, but, um. In this case, it would be having somebody who isn't looking to make money on the system. And who we already have a relationship with, you know, who's proven to be solid so far, um, having them actually, you know, telling us. What the, what the spec ought to be for, for the replacing.
And so we could use this money to. To fund an engineering study.
I, I, I don't know about that Angus, can we, so that, yeah.
Yeah, any, any lawful purpose, I wouldn't vary a number of exclusions.
So.
So how, so how. I wouldn't think this would. Slow it down too much.
It might, but it will address.
It will be slower, but, uh.
I think it will be more effective.
Which, which, which will be slower, you mean, having somebody start, yeah, and then, well, I mean, we'll see what they, what they come back with for a number for that specification, but it. Seemed like it might make sense to follow that path. So that's.
And so would there be an energy efficiency angle with, you know, what they're proposing that we wouldn't have?
No, 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 actually, uh, you know, yeah, I mean, that should be equivalent either way. I mean, well, you know, if it's properly sized. Uh, arguably, maybe the answer to that then is yes, is if it's, if it's.
If it's too big, then we're wasting.
It's too small, you end up burning it out.
So are we going on that or just?
I, I don't think there's anything to vote on. I just wanted to let you know that that thought process was going on. And, and, um, when the, you know, we, we. Will be all, under no obligation to exercise that, um, when, when we have a proposal from them. But, but he understands when town meeting is and we'll have a proposal before town meeting.
But what we're voting on is whether to fund the project.
Ahead of time so that we can not, either yes or no, keep it on the. On the warrant.
Right.
It's on the warrant.
To keep it.
So is the thought to, um. I guess Rick on, on what you're suggesting, which sounds, which sounds great, would that be a reason to, for the board to not act on this or?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, you know, one way or another, if we're gonna pay for it, you know, either we pay for it with, um. You know, about, about free cash, or, or I'm sorry, that's coming out of stabilization. So either we pay for it out of stabilization or we pay for it, um. Uh, out of ARPA funds and that's, I think that's, that's kind of a philosophical question. Like, I know Wendy, you had some reservations about. You know, picking away at the ARPA funds for small projects, maybe not being the right way to deal with it and, and, or at least that's what I think.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to have a, you know, an overall plan. I think this project is a good one, but, um. But before we spend any more.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, doing it in, you know, for big chunk projects, I think there's a certain amount of sense in that.
So if we just vote to use ARPA funds to, for this project, we're not necess, we don't have to vote on whether it includes the engineering study or not.
Correct, yeah.
I don't think so, no.
Right, and I only offer that now because at some point. You know, it's important that, that, uh, bring up to you on that.
I can't, uh, I, I certainly hope we're not, it, like. For one unit, I mean, how much could their spec writing cost for that? Uh, it, it can't be that.
Do you think you'll have a, a cost from them in the next two weeks before town meeting?
Yeah, he's, he pretty much assured us, he didn't have the, 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 the cost of spec, you know, to go through the process of specing things, you have to. I mean, he, he, he got what information he could see superficially, um, and he thought he had enough, you know, to. There to put together a specification.
Why don't we approve this, but still leave the other on, on in cases, if there is some. Yeah, yeah.
It's just whether or not we pass it over.
Right, yeah, so really it comes down to, on the floor, you have to, we, we pass it over in the, uh.
So. What do we want, do we want to do this?
Yeah, I think this is a, their project to use ARPA funds for, so.
Okay, so the only, I guess, question in my mind is, again, the big chunks projects. Um, does it make sense for us to hold on to the ARPA funds? Just in case we conclude that that's the only way we're going to be able to, um, replace the Middle Street Bridge.
Well, they're not gonna have color.
No, they're not, but, but, you know, it would be something over seven hundred thousand dollars towards the, you know, what.
After this?
No, no, without, without this, it will be over seven.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, so it's six twenty-five so far out of about one point.
Well, that's up to ten for the consulting, so six.
So six thirty-five, I'm about, just over one point four, so it's like seven hundred and sixty-five, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars up the track. Yeah, and we have six hundred thousand dollars that we've already, um, designated for the bridge.
That's right. And, you know, even a town meeting appropriated stabilization funds for this project. That wouldn't preclude you from paying it out of ARPA anyway, so it's not like that's.
Right.
You know, closing.
Right.
This option.
Right.
That's an interesting point, Rick, with regard to the bridge.
Right, yeah, exactly, we were fine. I mean, we should have been clapping when we came back.
I have to say that that's one of the things, that the whole navigable waterways thing. Makes you have a problem with the way government works. Because it was outrageous that it costs us fifty, sixty thousand. Almost a whole year to have someone in the state government. Tell us that the reservoir is not gonna have a Carnival cruise ship going down. That's what it took. And it's just. That's, no, let's be real, it, someone was having job. Was maintaining job security there and just. A third grader could have made the decision in five minutes. Un- unbelievable. That's what it was designed. Is this a navigable waterway? This hasn't been a boat on there in seventy-five years. And, and, or a hundred years and it just. It, it, and it took them almost a year to figure it out. Wha- what's wrong? You don't find that a little odd?
I can deal with the D E P also.
But, but sometimes process is just ridiculous, so that was it.
Yeah, I think I got the impression Wendy, from when we talked for it, there's actually more behind this. Than just simply whether it's an applicable waterway, so that's why I stopped grasping about it. I think there's more than I understand. I haven't, I haven't studied the, uh. You know, chapter eighty-five or whatever it is in my. So that acknowledged my, my, uh, lack of, lack of knowledge, yeah. But. I sympathize, sorry.
Sometimes you just have to get stuff done and that's not how the government works always.
So what about this ARPA?
Well, let's have a motion.
I'm moving we not use ARPA funds. That we not, that's, cause we can do it later.
Can we make a negative vote?
No.
No, just, just.
The motion is a negative motion.
Right, I know, I was kind of kidding with that motion, so I, I, I make a, and I'm hoping I don't get a second or hopefully I don't get. Yes, uh, but I make a motion that we. Uh, use our funds for the, uh, HEAC in the page school.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, the bridge will have a limited, I mean, these ARPA funds are limited in longevity. So that's another reason to have a plan. We don't want to just hold all.
Twenty twenty-six. Calendar twenty twenty-six. They have to be fully committed by the end of calendar twenty-four, fully expanded by.
So the project is ready to go tomorrow.
But that we cannot fully fund even with that.
All right, and we have better in two and a half years. We have, actually, tw- end of twenty twenty-six.
Calendar, yeah.
Yeah, so we have three years.
But the project, the project has to be finished.
No, funds have to be committed by.
No, no, expanded by twenty-six, committed by twenty.
Yeah, but they could be, you know, if we, if you started the project and it was a year of project, that could be the first money you sent, right?
Right, but if we don't, we don't have the entire funding for it, though, we're still short, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't want to use that ARPA money.
Yeah, but, but, but we have, we have three, better than three and a half years. If, if that doesn't happen. You think we're not gonna have any other projects in the next three and a half years that we could apply the funds to?
The, the funds have to be committed by the end of twenty-four. Doesn't that mean a specific project?
Yeah. End of calendar or a? Yeah, okay. So we have a year and eight months.
That's all, I mean, that, that further supports the idea to have a plan, you know, and.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all is in favor of. Using the ARPA money for the HEAC. Replacement, aye.
All right, so I guess I would ask, uh, with that vote, do you still want to put the article through a vote of town meeting? Or do you want to pass over with no, uh, action?
I think pass over, but take the opportunity to say that we're using.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I, I don't know if anyone noticed it, uh, if you, if you go into, um. Uh, Byfield, sort of near the Georgetown border and there's, there's a, there's a. Bridge there, not a heck of a lot smaller than.
That's the Parker River right there.
Yeah, and there, there was a bridge that was, the. Uh, the culvert had given out and, and the, uh, the bridge had been shut off to, to traffic for.
The blocking.
Oh, oh, that's.
For quite some time and they've, and, uh. Cause I sometimes bike, bike that way and, uh. Uh, drove across it in a vehicle a couple of days ago. I was surprised that. In very short order, cause I've been go over on the bike and it's been shut off just like the Middle Street Bridge. And somehow they managed to get that bridge fixed in really short order. I don't know how, but they did. To say. It's not, it's not as high or, or as big of a bridge, but that being said, that they, um. It looked in, it was in bad disrepair and it's, um, automobiles can now go across it.
Uh, item E is, uh, really just on, is an informational update. Uh, there've been a number of different, um. Kind of efforts, uh, with regard to pedestrian safety planning for the Route one thirteen corridor. So I put this together, it's Mark draft, because I, I'm still kind of, I think it's accurate and correct and I think it's complete, but. I wanted to send it around to Christine and Wayne, uh, Christine Wallace and Wayne, just kind of make sure it reflects our collective knowledge. Uh, but I initially started writing this actually back on the date, you may have noticed it's dated March twenty-seventh, you're just getting that. That was when I wrote it, and I just never sent it. My initial audience was was partly this board and the public, but also partly Senator Tarr's office, because I've been contacted by a staff person, you know, very interested in what we're doing out out here with the crossings. And uh, we put in requests to D O T, and they they have assured us that they're going to put in uh additional signage to bring better visibility to the crosswalks in front of the town offices.
Hmm.
Um, so that is in process, we don't have a firm date, but it's it is something they've committed to do. Uh, but I wanted to just put together a single kind of summary of all the various efforts. And this is going to end up getting uh, you know, put into the town projects section of the website that we're building out, that kind of a pedestrian and uh bicycle and equestrian and safety planning page where we can just just try to, because it it could seem just, you know, it could seem scattered to people, whether it's this and that, the other thing. It really is, especially with the corridor study, if that gets funded, that's going to help make sure it is all really part of one cohesive effort along the corridor. And uh, I talked to Christine Wallace last week about the uh value that will come from setting out some of these major initiatives onto a single, single calendar. I included the, you know, like the M V P uh planning process, the N B T A Communities Planning Process, the Housing Production Plan, uh, the um Page School, you know, once we get, anyhow, there's there's like a lot of really major efforts, and so we've talked about, we're going to get together a meeting with with key department heads to start to get all these big projects. Kind of how can we set out a coordinated planning process for public input where we can actually get a lot of people involved and not uh, you know, cannibalize our audience where they, where maybe we're splitting it so thin that we're not getting enough people at any of them, so we we want to look at something that's more of a multi-topic workshops, maybe, where we're we're not just talking pedestrian safety, maybe we're also talking housing, also talking resiliency, but we'll we'll be thinking more about that, but we are uh interested in looking ahead and coming up with, you know, some number of kind of major public events that address multiple boxes, maybe with with breakout routes or something, uh, because when we layer over one on top of each other, all the various major projects that demand a lot of public involvement, it it's going to end up uh probably stretching what you can reasonably expect people to find time for, you know, that bridge is busy in their 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 home lives as well.
Angus, how does the the um, no, I don't even know what it's called, but the 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 grant for the town center, what's that, the the, how how does that, can that fit in with the whole thing too?
Yeah, so that that summarized with the town center traffic coming, and and that came from the Mass uh Office of Economic Development. And uh, we have not executed the contract yet, because in order.
Is there a timeline on that?
There is, we actually have through fiscal twenty six for that, so of all the things I've laid out in this memo, that's the one where we have by far the longest.
Oh, okay.
Which is nice, because, you know, at a staff level, we're worried about, you know, just overloaded, trying to take on too much, and I can tell you that while we're, you know, we're pleased with the work T E C is doing, we we do intend to put that town center work out to bid, and in all likelihood, hire a different firm to get a different set of ideas. Uh, so that is going to obviously extend the time it takes to to spec it out, go out to bid, and uh uh, that's part of why I haven't executed the contract with the state yet, because uh you know, in doing so, we're supposed to provide them a kind of scope and budget, so there's a, there's a lot of work to do, a lot of these things. Um, that, you know, was going to be, keep us quite busy with Wayne here, and now with the with the transition, these, you know, these are some of the things that will you know, inevitably will will lose some time, uh, just with the vacancy there. But yeah, so this is really just informational, uh, but if there's questions or discussing on it, that's that's fine.
So, just uh, I'm sure we've all been getting emails about the the signage out here, so it did uh Mast dot give you any indications when they might have some, the, you're dealing with that or not?
Not specifically, I think it'll be this spring. It's not like an indefinite.
Okay.
Timeframe, I think it'll be this spring, and Wayne Wayne is leveraging, you know, the relationships he has there, emphasizing the urgency. And Senator Tarr's office has has been very you know, very willing to help, they want to do everything they can to help. So I'm I'm trying to trying to uh you know, maintain a balance between trying to get it done as quick as we can, but also not potentially souring a relationship with a staff person at D O T who's been very responsive. You know, it's it, to me, you only want the Senator's office bearing down on them once you feel that that's necessary, if they're doing everything they can.
Yeah.
And then they're getting political pressure, that's when their life, come on, you know, so it take, it takes time to get signage. If it was a matter of just getting it restripped, that would be one thing, but that's not really, doesn't seem to be the issue, is is the signage that will be uh that that would make things better. But I have been in touch with Senator Tarr's office, uh, I think probably at least twice, if not three times in the last few weeks on that, so he's very uh attuned to that. All right, uh, I didn't have, this is partly informational, but there is also some guidance I'm I'm looking for here. Uh first of all, I think in reviewing this, you can, you know, this is great for anybody who's, I think this board, you you all know all this stuff, but I think in general, if you ever have people like, why does it take so long, this is why, this stuff is not cut and paste, boilerplate, like, an enormous amount of care goes into wordsmithing these kinds of things, and, you know, you hope that pays off in the long run by giving the prospective vendors a very clear understanding of the project. So then hopefully you get better bids, hopefully you get a better vendor, and hopefully in the long term it all pays off, but the point is, these procurement processes take a huge amount of time, and I think you probably also saw an earlier draft of this, but I know when I went through it, and I, when it was presented to me, I was told, you know, these seven people were all already signed up, and I still have fifty changes I made. They were pretty substantive, and I think they made it better, so anyhow, this is now officially out on the street. Uh, Caitlin Bradstreet's been the point of contact for prospective vendors and sending things out, and and it would be too soon to know, you know, if we're going to get bids, obviously, we hope we will, and we expect we will, but just based on the number of inquiries she's gotten since it appeared in the central register, uh, we we are cautiously optimistic that we're going to get.
So you did get some?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, she's gotten double digits of.
And it was only late last week.
Just last week.
And did they, did they know how many dollars were affected here?
So, I I believe we did, uh, yeah, it does, especially.
Oh, it it's several points, it 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 says not to exceed, not to exceed, no, but I didn't know if the preliminary thing said that, that went out.
Oh, oh, I don't, I didn't, I don't, I don't have a copy of the actual summary thing that appeared in the central register.
Yeah.
I don't know if that, if it all even appeared in, I don't know. So anyhow, the the question or the guidance I'm looking for uh is uh, on page three of the R F Q, it speaks to the process for the selection, and uh and this is something you may remember, you had voted back in late uh twenty twenty two to, under the uh designer selection procedures that we have, you had voted to delegate the C P O as basically the authority to manage the process. Uh, and so that office you know, is is authorized to conduct the se- selection process. Uh, and the intent was that that Chief Procurement Officer would collaborate with town staff, Kentucky administrators, a select board member and resident uh, who uh that we have this assessment advisory group. And so, just in brainstorming, uh, obviously with Wayne leaving, uh, you know, we need to and this will be, I think, on your next agenda, we'll have to have the board designate an interim chief procurement officer. So we won't decide that tonight, um. But some of the names that that Christine had suggested in terms of who would be part of this, would be uh possibly me, possibly her, uh, Sam Jocelyn, I think would be great to have involved. Uh, not necessarily Justin, we know he's really busy, uh, but Emily Petery definitely, the principal, we definitely want her to be involved. Uh, uh, Kentucky Facilities, which ideally would be Greg Hadden, depending on his availability, uh, we do think he could participate, uh, Rick, we thought would be great, uh, Elisa Grammer. Uh, so I don't know that we need to formalize that tonight, because the bids aren't due till May nineteenth. Uh, but I think that's something we put onto, I think, your first agenda in May, is to kind of solidify who's going to be part of that working group, and how's that process going to work um, on the the selection of a consultant. Uh, you know, do they, is is that group is going to shortlist and turn it to this board to make an award, or or do you want to delegate that to the procurement officer? Uh, you know, spell that detail with, you know, rankings and things, so.
Yeah, it seems though, you know, um it kind of depends upon who the C P O is the the interim C P O.
Hmm.
Yeah, does it, does the new person want that responsibility or like that responsibility?
If it's an interim, if somebody doing it interim, um, you know, is this, is this in their wheelhouse?
Right, that, yeah.
Are you looking for a decision on this tonight?
No, no, but of the names I listed, do you think that is generally the composite, the kind of composition that you would uh envision, or are there other either individuals or or entities that you think ought to be represented?
No, you you got more than enough.
Yeah. You want more than, you know, five.
You've already got, you've, no, seven is too many people, you don't need seven.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm wondering about having um somebody from the facilities, the school, I I you know, really, we're selecting a consultant based on the town's needs.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I mean, it, it, so um.
So, yeah, so we've got Emily, maybe it's that.
I think so, especially because it's not technically an employee, you know, anymore, but.
Yeah, yeah, the only, I guess, the only caveat to that is that, um, if it were Greg, he has, you know, a a wealth of knowledge about that particular building, and and he's always also, I think, pretty perceptive when it comes to um content, dealing with contractors, dealing with people who are doing whatever the type of work happens today.
Right, but this is to to select an architect, you know, which I think is a difference.
True, true, but but, you know, they, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it was to to select a contractor to do the work, I could see that, but this is really to select an architect to do an assessment for the town, so we're we're choosing, you know, it's a feasibility study.
Yeah.
We're trying to get a a completely new set of eyes to 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 look at it.
Yeah, I think the fewer, not the fewer people, but we definitely want to keep it under five.
That's that's what, seven is is not, is too much.
So maybe like uh if we have Christine Wallace, Rick, Elisa, Emily, and Sam, that might be a good group, and I'm just, I mean, could be someone else, but this board, it could be any of, any of the three, but we're just.
Well, Richard's been part of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd I'd be happy to stay involved, but.
I can see.
What's it?
When you got a. Yeah, it's challenging to have the C P O gone for right, right when this is happening.
Yeah, I mean, it is timing, I mean, there are a bunch of things coming down the line right now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, as of Thursday, there were thirteen requests for the R F Q.
That's
That's really.
Pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully have that number of statements.
Maybe if we had three.
Regarding regarding the school district, do you think that Emily is a better choice than uh than somebody from the facilities?
Yeah, I I think for feasibility study.
So, yeah, we'll just keep this on for uh, you know, for a May, the first May, May meeting, so we've got, we've got a little time to firm it up. I just wanted to get you thinking about it, because there is going to be a decision to be made. Uh, even though the R F Q sets out a detailed process that doesn't specify whose and all. Um, and uh, yeah, with the turnover with with Wayne's seat, that might change how we might have done it otherwise. Ready for uh I N G?
Yes. So my, uh, I I don't know what else feels, I don't see that there's any downside to joining this this uh consortium uh on the lawsuit, you know?
The only potential downside is if a better firm comes along and a stronger case, but, I mean, we're not going to know that.
Right, well, and the fact that K P laws align themselves with.
Hmm, um. What was the reference to the website?
When I first got, so so, yeah, uh, Mark, I I had gotten this email from K P, and then Mark had sent me a link, and I, it was a very glitchy website, and it made me.
To the locker?
Yeah, yeah, and and so that's where I forwarded it to uh, Tim saying this is being sent to me as if it was from K P, but is it, and he said, yes.
Okay.
So it was just that, maybe they were getting a ton of traffic that day because. But, yeah, it was just a glitchy, eventually it did load and it looked fine, but it had pop-ups and things, so.
That's kind of weird.
Yeah, yeah, uh.
All right, but Tim backs for them.
Yeah, yeah, he said.
Maybe that's the second line of business. The pop-up ads. Um, yeah, I I agree with you, R G, I don't I don't really see a downside to this.
The the ultimate as I told Angus, I'll be dead and Angus will be retired by the time this lawsuit is settled, so uh.
Oh, yeah, here, here you go, here's the, here's the page, so, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. There is a live agent.
It's a live agent, he looks, he looks, he's a picture.
He's definitely.
He's definitely not a robot at all, so.
That's kind of weird.
I thought it was.
So, so what was Tim's response?
He, he said, he said the, uh, it's a legitimate email, uh, from KP's department with the PPOS. And then, you know, the slides I included in there, but, and he gave the recommended form of motion if we do want to sign on, but.
That makes it more serious.
You tried to click away. Oh, that's what happens when you like, when you try to go away from the website. It's like, hey, let me get your attention.
Oh, jeez.
A big national.
All right, now should we trust him? Do you, or do you know of any other towns that are joining?
No, no, and, and I don't, I don't really, I, I don't know if there's urgency or not. I haven't, I, I haven't researched it, so I, I can tell you the water department's kind of like, have they voted it yet? Have they voted? So they're kind of pressing me. As you know, I've had a lot of other, a lot of other things, so, but there's nothing here that says do it before the price goes up.
We're almost out of stock.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, if, if you wanted to wait till, you know, after the election, there's a new board member, yeah, I don't see any harm in that. And, and I could send something around to Alyssa and just say, hey, another signed on, is, what do you think about their website? It's a pleasure of the board, whatever.
Yeah, there's not an urgent urgency to it. I, I would like to know if other towns have signed on.
I felt totally differently until I saw the website.
I don't know why you had, you could have like talked to Justin Timberlake right there, right? That was the live agent.
You could have done that live during the meeting.
All right, I'll, I'll, we'll check it out.
I mean, in general, you, you know, we, we need. I think we need to pursue the issue. We need to get in on some kind of a, uh, this is not class action, but it's a, you know, sort of. Joint pursuit by a, a bunch of, bunch of communities. And there's no way in the world that we're going to have to do anything ourselves and we're probably are going to have some liability as a result of people.
It's interesting on the, the state, the United States map, look how concentrated it is.
Yeah, it was, it was really scary to see. Eastern seaboard in, like Colorado.
Yeah, it was, it was actually, was it Oklahoma and, and Colorado? And then there's a bunch of west coast too. It was just Oklahoma makes sense to drilling or oil fields that they have up there. Probably, it probably is just fracking for somebody, you know?
All right, so IDG, this is a continuation. Uh, I had had a meeting with.
I think it's even on flaws.
With Kate and Brad Street, Jim joined us as well, and we were just kind of trying to think of something that would, uh, try to satisfy the. Multiple objectives or. Kind of something that's. Consistent, but, but building in this, the West Newbury organizations, we, we've got some feedback, resident feedback that. Some of the groups, it's just been part of their, how they've operated for a long, long time, but we have to use our meeting rooms without cost and so, you know. We wanted to be respectful of that because there really isn't. Any real impact of those kinds of uses.
So what does the, where it says free, there's a double asterisk after that, but I don't see it referenced anywhere in the. Like a.
Oh, it looks like it's a missing.
It should have been a second asterisk where it says.
The single asterisk is for the four hour rental, right?
Okay, oh, it's funny, I didn't see the four hour rental maximum. I saw the fee only be way, and I saw a single asterisk above it. It didn't make sense at all.
Because the idea was if there was food, it most likely would take more John's time and God forbid there's a spill or anything like that, that it would take more.
So Angus, as. The, the thing that, that bothered me was, was that, was that. In here, using the, the room for free and it just. Really, you would want to have like tons of people coming here?
Well, just West Newbury organizations, what does that mean? Like a board or committee or?
But no, no. Well, so that, that was one of the things that came up at our meeting is, is, um. And, and it's, it's a challenging issue because it's, it's easy to come up with, you know, the garden club, the historical society, you know, uh. Boy, boy scouts, girl scouts, you know, uh. But at what point does, does it become, okay, all of the, you know, youth sports or if they're having, you know, one of the things in terms of like, uh, they'll have. Season ending backwards where it's a major event with catering and, and it's on a Saturday. And, uh, we don't have a custodian on a Saturday and that basically means that. I found a space on Sunday because there's no one there until Monday. So these are some of the logistics where we, we felt food was definitely a threshold issue.
But what about, I'm talking about upstairs.
The upstairs meeting room. Uh, if there's no food, there really isn't, and it's, it doesn't get the kind of use that this, this room gets. So we didn't feel that that was a big issue.
But do people use it much dur, I mean. The. Staff use it much during the day here?
We conduct, we often have been conducting job interviews out there. Um, but we wouldn't have to if it wasn't available, you know, um. Well, we might have to because if I'm part of it, I could use my conference room, but like with the assistant town clerk, Jim and Rebecca conducted the. Initial six screening interviews and now I'm part of the finalist interview, so I wasn't part of the initial one, so I don't know where. Yeah, you have them upstairs, so.
So six? I, I was not aware of that.
We've got, we've gotten well over ten applicants.
Wow.
Um, and we narrowed it down to six because, yeah, um, the best in every week, um.
One today and two more, I think on Wednesday.
Uh, great. Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the other issue was always. Uh, okay, it's, it's. Uh. I don't, just to pick a sport or something, uh, a youth football thing and this. The, there's two people from West Newbury and there's. Two people from Merrimack and there's two people from Payroll, but, but it's a West Newbury organization. So, and, and so. Uh, but that happens a lot where. The majority of people on a team or whatever, or whatever it is, a, a. Bridge tournament or something, a couple of people are from West Newbury, but the majority of people are not. I'm just, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, but the, that.
So we need a definition of what is a West Newbury organization.
Yeah.
I mean, it should be, all participants are from West Newbury, right?
I don't know, I don't know. That's going to be, that's going to exclude, it's like cop scouts or, or boy scouts. I, I think those, even if they're based in a town, I don't think there's a residency requirement.
Initially, we are members of the garden club, technically, we are not a list of.
I just don't see that it's anything. Something can't, like, like, for example, um. Uh. A resident association of, 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 one of the, 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 um. I used to, exactly. I used to live in the, in the Twig Rush neighborhood and, and. We used to have meetings in someone's house and then people felt it was awkward to not vote, to vote. About some issue at, at someone's house, so they, so we would, we would have meetings in, in, uh, we would schedule a. Annual meeting or whatnot here, but. Come on, we could come up with five bucks, I mean, whatever, it seems, it seems unbelievable that it has, that, that, that. Um. That any organization doing anything can't come up with a, with a.
With a little bit of mind.
With a couple of bucks to, this, the, the lights are on, the heat's on, I mean, come on. Five dollars, I mean.
Well, even five dollars is kind of token.
It's kind of, it's completely token, but, but I mean, to, 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 to have some organizations and they can't. Uh, it, it, it has to be free. I, I don't know.
So there is staff time involved, right? Cleaning up after, yeah, I. Do you think it's important to make a distinction between nonprofits and West Newbury organizations? Or is that just the fee you were getting?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because, uh, Red Cross is a nonprofit, but that's a, that's a, it, it takes a major amount.
Billion dollar organization.
Yeah.
And, and they, they make several hundred dollars per donation.
Which they'll never, they'll never tell away. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm reading from Wendy Melton Caitlin, you know, she said those, uh, that would, for the Red Cross blood drives, it would be out, that John would spend hours after their events. Uh, to prepare the annex for the COA's exercise classes. There's a lot of issues with things that if something's there all day and, and there's a COA event like. First thing the next day, it really just the entire, our sole custodial person. Has to focus on, focus this entire, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big impact. People don't see it, you know? Uh, but it's a big operational impact. Uh, fortunately, at this point, we have really good communication between. Caitlin doing the reservations and, and John doing the, you know, custodial, you know, in. When I started, it wasn't, you know, it was routinely, there were like very last minute. Like, hey, there's a group here, the facility's not ready and we have to call it over and scramble. The communication wasn't there. At least now there's better communication, but it. It, there's still a significant operational impact where John's got to kind of orient his day around facility rentals, not around. All the other needs for his time, and so, um. That's where I think the, the earlier draft that you got a couple of weeks ago did have a fee for everybody. It just, there is an impact. Uh, but, but we got some pushback on that, uh, from who? Uh. Well, Rob Phillips was pretty strenuous about it. He, he emailed and called and called and, you know.
What's the?
He, he just said that, he said, look, these, the, these, the use of these buildings is part of the fabric of the community. There's groups like the garden club or whatever that have been using them forever and ever, and if you. Charge them, we are going to make a lot of people really angry and what are you getting out of it? You got five bucks, like, it was more of a. Just like people live here, they, they should have some ability to use their public facilities. Just by virtue of being part of the community, which.
But, but every other town, we're, we're like the. We're like the, the, the low, we're, we're the cheapest anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
We found, we found that out if you ask people, it was way too, way too expensive and name the town.
Well, some, some of his earlier suggestions were to actually have. Only have fees if things were left in a bad condition, but then at a staff level, that wasn't. Because if someone's just chased them down to pay them, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, logistics with that that were. Weren't good, um.
I, I mean, maybe if the second floor hearing room or, you know, that could be free, but I think there should be a charge for the annex in the old town hall. I mean, that's a lot to clean up those spaces.
To, to heat the old town hall?
Well, yeah, that's another big question because if we bring the whole, whole town hall on the temperature. You'd probably burn fifty dollars worth of fuel.
Easily. Uh, ma- maybe not fifty, but.
I mean, you know, so, what's that, you know, today's, today's probably, I don't know, it's a cool all across now, you know? Probably close to four bucks a gallon. I don't, I don't know what it is. I don't use it anymore, but it's probably twelve gallons. I wouldn't be surprised if you spend twelve gallons to bring that space up to temperature. If it's, you know, from, from forty degrees.
So do, do other towns charge residents to use them, do you know?
I, I mean, we're, we're kind of unique in the sense of. We have a lot of space, um. I know, I've got examples like Havil has the auditorium, is the old high school, so they, depending on the organization, they kind of take it at. So you, like, as the town clerk or the city clerk's office, I can reserve the space, no problem. But if it was an organization that was going to be using off hours, it would depend, like, it's the criteria. Does somebody have to be there to open the door? Does somebody have to be there to lock up, to clean? And so it's just that, like, list of criteria of things. If it's the middle of the day and like, they just want to use it for a meeting, it wouldn't cost anything because there was no.
So the town clerk's office would make that call?
No, that was the, um. The. Um, chief procurement officer who, who would handle that kind of stuff, but.
I just wonder if other towns are, are charging, is, are, is that why people are coming here? Because we don't charge?
I don't, I don't think there's been really like an uptick in. Usage per se, um. I think the idea behind the, the free aspect of, at least from the conversations Caitlin and I had, if we left the second floor meeting room free. Maybe that would drive people out from using the annex for a meeting or old town hall, things like that. So if the garden club didn't have thirty people, if they only had a ten person meeting, maybe they could meet upstairs instead of in the annex.
I, I think that makes sense, but I would change the, the annex in the old town hall.
Yeah. Did you want to leave that per hour, flat fee?
Well, I think per hour because it does reflect, you know, it's a large space and there's a lot, you know, heating or cooling depending on the season. I just, I'm just not sure whether a West Newbury organization should be treated differently than a nonprofit and then you get into what is a West Newbury organization. Maybe it could be local organizations, I don't know. Just in recognition of the fact that most organizations are not just West Newbury people.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be. Maybe, y- your, your point, Wendy, to, to. Instead of having to like, how many people like come from West Newbury or don't or whatever, just. Um. Commercial nonprofit and that's it, just keep it simple.
So why not, you have to be a five oh one C to be a, a, you know, to be a nonprofit? And then what, is that what you have? Because what about organizations that, what if, and. I'm not suggesting that they would, but say what if WN two wanted to use space? They're not a, they're not, you know, legally a nonprofit, right? Um, but they're not for a property, right?
Yeah, I would say they would be a local organization, you know? I mean, I think, you know, Red Cross is a nonprofit. I think that's different than the board scraps, wanting to use the space for a meeting, you know? I, so there, to me, there's utility in separating out nonprofit and local or West Newbury.
Okay.
I just think we need to define, you know, what, what falls in that last category.
What are nonprofits do that resides with Red Cross? Uh, the organization that, um, used the facility briefly, it was. Early intervention, they used it.
Meeting.
The poor players is a nonprofit, yeah.
There was, there was an annual thing in the spring. I'm trying to think, uh. From, from Newbury Board, um. Always use up the annex on a weekend, big, big group.
Near is a good example, like, they, they could fall into the nonprofit, they could fall into the local.
Yeah.
So.
I, I can't believe how many times I've been in discussions about this and my. Entire career on this. I've been in discussions about this, and my entire career on this. It goes around, first, let's make it expensive, cause we're getting too many people, now we're dropping it down again, it's just like, and it keeps. It now, it, I, I've voted on this probably.
I was gonna say, you could leave it up to.
Seven or eight times.
Whoever is doing the rentals.
Well, that's the, that's the kicker. No, no, it's actually so, so when you, if you read the Town Manager Act, it, it basically. That's the authority for renting. You know, rental of, of town facilities in the town manager, subject to policies voted by the board. Like so many other things in the Town Manager Act, it, it does best the administrative responsibility of my office. But it specifies based on.
I may, I'll make a, let's make vote on a policy that. We're dumping it all on the town manager.
You know, I, I, I would, I wouldn't relish that, but it would probably be, I mean, it's debatable, does it? I, I will say on, not just on this issue, but on various issues, if I spent the same time thinking about it that I do preparing for meetings.
Yeah.
Like, you know, it just, there's a time it takes to bring something to a board. That distracts actually from focusing on the issue.
Yeah.
So. Uh, but, but yeah, it's, it's a broad topic, I mean, one topic that you'll be hearing about in May. You know, uh, we'll have a different composed board, but, and it's not a facility, it's a field, but the, uh, this, this old. Ring of Bell from last year with regarding the pipe stage and the, uh. Riding Driving Club events, and, uh. Obviously Caitlin Bradstreet wasn't in this role back then, so she sent me an email late last week, and I, and it's, I, it's. Basically, the Riding Driving Club has put in their request for all of their, you know, adventure trails and so forth, and. Park and Rec Chair said, well, this is the fee they're gonna need to pay. And by the way, did they ever pay the fee from last fall, and so Caitlin Bradstreet sent that to me, and I said. We're gonna need to talk about this, there's a lot of history on this.
Yeah.
Um, and so I met her today, and we talked it through, and, and, you know. That's something I'll be bringing to you in May, because I, I don't see that. Park and Rec has the authority to be charging for, you know, they're, they're thinking of it, well, if we can't. Rent out the fields during the western event, we should charge them. You know, for the fields, even though they're not using the fields, or charge them for the parking, because. We can't use the fields, but I don't believe they're on solid grounds in charging that, but if you look at the fee schedule. Under the fee of the, uh. Facility rental policy for use of the riding ring, it says to be determined, I mean, it couldn't be more vague, so it's. There's just all this ambiguity that goes back. Many, many years, and, and, uh, every time it comes up, it reminds me of why people have punted on these issues or made them ambiguous. Uh, so then, you know, my office is left like sorting out the issue where, um. You know, and there's, there's, and, you know, we're hearing from the Riding Driving Club, they never paid a fee. We're hearing from Park and Rec, well, if they didn't pay their last fee, they can't use it, you know, and I'm the one mediating this stuff. Instead of a hundred other things I shouldn't be working on.
I was at that meeting and they agreed to pay not the full fee, but some reduced portion.
Yeah, and that's exactly what Brad was asking about, is did they actually pay that?
Okay.
And.
They, I mean, they agreed to it, or whoever was representing it, with, with the debt.
Well, I, I, that rang a bell, and I told Caitlin Bradstreet, and I said, I was at a meeting, and I said, I wouldn't, you know, it's, it's very possible they did, but I. You know, then it goes, I mean, the, there's no meeting minutes for Park and Rec, I posted the website for the last couple of years.
Yeah.
I remember there's like one set, so it's, it's, again, it's a research project, what did they agree to? You know, then. Who collected the fee, and was it turned over to? The treasure collector that she received it as a fee, I mean, it's just, this stuff is not, we're not equipped.
Yeah.
To be doing this, and we, we spent a lot of time on that, uh.
So what if the column for the West Newbury organizations leave the first one free, make the bandstand a ten dollar flat fee. Mill Pond twenty. And then make the annex in Town Hall ten dollars an hour for each of those, so there's a significant. Difference for West Newbury?
Make it fifteen bucks an hour. I was just trying to think through the, you know. Cause you gotta clean it up, plus you have to heat it in winter, or in its fall season.
So three, ten, twenty, fifteen.
I mean, that's.
Something like that, and that type of those numbers, I was just trying to make it, you know, like, half the. Nonprofit, which, which are typically larger organizations, not local.
Right, it just strikes me, even if you're a West Newbury resident, if you, you know, if you're bringing a bunch of people on to use the facility, I think you'll at least pay the clean, for the cleanup cost.
Alright, so. Can we decide on this tonight? Um, I think we should.
Um, sure, so.
Okay, so what, so what do we got now, let's, let's wait.
Your, your, your suggestion.
The first two columns are.
The first two columns say the same, the, the third column becomes free, ten. Twenty, and I said fifteen, does that, I mean, for the bandstand, ten is fine, because it's. You know, it's outdoors, it's, you know, I mean, word of the case here.
The bandstand is pretty low maintenance.
Yes, exactly.
The mill pond is kind, it, it's, you have to get the key and it's.
Yeah.
It, it, they have set up a better system, or what you probably noticed in the foyer, where there's the key code. That people can actually get the key after hours, return it after hours, Caitlin, uh, Bradstreet actually has an audit trail, cause everyone's got a custom. Code, so, cause I asked her that, like, if they have a code, can they just open that anytime, she said, no, they can turn on and off the code, so it's.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it's a good system, it's much more efficient in terms of staff time. Than it was, um, in terms of getting the key.
Not to mention security of the key itself, so anyone could have walked in, grabbed the key and used the annex. As opposed to now, you have to know a code, and Caitlin knows who logged in, when they logged in.
Okay, wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
I would say ten and ten for the annex in Old Town Hall. I mean, the point is, yeah, it costs money, but if these are West Newbury residents or purported to be, then, you know, try and address the. The belief that they should have, uh, access to town facilities. So it's really a token thing, just to acknowledge that there is a cost associated with.
Ten, ten bucks flat fee or ten bucks?
Okay, okay, I'll go with that.
You wanted to read West Newbury residents and organizations instead, so it's a little more defining.
I, I don't know what West Newbury organizations means.
It's one of the organizations based in West Newbury.
Well, but it's not, it's not, it's.
Yeah, I mean, those aren't like formal organizations with a home address, I mean, I think that's like, to me, that means Boy Scouts. Church groups, you know, sports teams, I don't know, that's. I, I assume it would fall in that category, you know, even if it's. Kentucky towns.
You have to have West Newbury in your name and the name of the organization?
You have to have at least one person that has a verifiable West Newbury residence.
That person must apply.
Chip implanted in there.
I was gonna say, at least, at least. At least one person has to have a WN tattooed somewhere.
I was gonna say, maybe, maybe that's how you define it is.
Yeah. So what about that?
What?
The person applying has to be a West Newbury resident, then that way they're responsible for it, and then.
And that way it falls under the West Newbury organization.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good, yeah.
Right.
You gotta prove you're bona fide.
Alright, everything else looks great. So that's my motion. Right, Archie, any discussion?
No, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And Archie never talked about it. Archie, if this comes up, could we invite you back?
I figure maybe August we'll be voting on it.
I was gonna say, make Archie.
I'm going to draft, draft cans and bet the under.
Well, thank you, I tell Caitlin, thank you, appreciate the effort, wanted to do this.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we at?
I let her eye the acceptance of the MTL regarding Assistant Electrical Inspectors.
I think we have a no brainer, can we?
Yeah, my, my, my move, we do that.
So, so this was the prior article request?
Yeah, and, and when you read the statute, it always has said, it's the, uh. Yeah, but one of the earlier from, one of the, yeah, it had referred to leading action, so, I hadn't read it. You know, I've taken the legal advice and I've read the statute closely enough.
Okay. Alright, so what's the language of the motion?
Uh, to accept the provisions.
He sent it, alright.
One sixty-six, second thirty-two A.
Right, that's the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I like that there's, that it still talks about telegraph companies.
Just in case we print back, it's like records, you know.
Oh, my hard copy's missing a few pages.
Yes.
Oh, alright, I was looking for the statue, but.
It wouldn't print.
Okay, I'll skip the page. Okay, alright, alright, good, alright.
You can tell because it's separately stapled, so they might see where the break is.
Alright, alright, good. It just wouldn't. Alright, so then, onto the, uh, grant applications, uh. The MVP grant, you'd already, you know, voted to support the matching funds, so I think it's kind of a, a formality, but to vote to just. Uh, support the submitter of that grant, it's not gonna be, the grant itself, it's gonna be another three weeks or more before it's fully. Written, there's a lot of work going on right now. Uh, between Christine Wallace and the Climate Change Resiliency Committee, but there are two other pieces to this, uh. I don't know if they, if they're looking for a letter of support from the board, or if the.
No, actually, it, it, I talked to Lisa about this, and I think it makes sense to have a letter of support from the board as well, I mean, we're trying to get them from. Everywhere we can, I think it's, you know, this is, we're gonna be a competitive grant, and, um. Want to do everything that we can.
And then the signage piece, can you share what you know about?
Yeah, so my understanding of the signage piece is that, um, somewhere, um. Somewhere, you know, re- relatively close or involved with a project, you need to, um, uh, have signage that. Uh, explains that there's this project, you know, funding and, and what's going on, um, it needs to be in. Uh, more than just English. Um, and, um, you know, but say. Thought was, again, this was what Lisa and her thought was, that, um, something sort of akin to the CPA signs. Um, one, um, posted at either end of the, um, of the, of River Road, you know, certain at the end of Coffin Street where it's River Road. And then beginning for the, the other end of River Road where it intersects with Bridge Street.
Well, you could, you could put it on the, the, the piece of land that, that, that the town was.
Oh, okay, yeah. Glad we all thought that.
I know.
Okay, good. Alright, and, and, you know, you probably, um, have limited vertage. On the sign, and then have a QR code on the sign, so that.
And would this have to get a temporary sign permit from the state board?
That's right, yeah, we'd have to get a, a sign permit from the select board.
Is it, it is temporary or something?
Well, no, actually, I think it's for the direct, you know, I don't have a lot of detail, I, I haven't had time to read them, and there's, there's a lot of. Stuff in that process, but, um, no, I, I think this is. More than temporary, it's not forever, but it's more than temporary.
Length of the project, yeah, probably for, for the duration of the grant.
So it's on town land or on private land?
Uh, on town land, ideally.
But we don't own land.
Well, see, we, we own the land.
I don't think that would qualify, because it's not on the road, it's like not visual.
Yes, it's wide, a, a little sliver of it, kind of almost comes right to the road.
Almost.
Yeah. Right next to the field.
Yeah, it's pretty heavily wooded and shrubbed and everything.
Just look at the, look at this plot sometime.
I, I've been out there.
Okay.
You know, I think the exact place can be determined, um, and.
So they're just looking for commitment to place this.
Right, right, that, that signs can be, can be both.
Oh, they don't need a location?
I don't think we need to say a location, I mean, I, I think we could generally say. Near the limits of the study area.
Yeah.
I mean. Why not?
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at this, I, and there's a ton of paper on this, but. Under outreach and engagement methods, uh, for the MVP action grant, it gives a number of. Examples, or, or back sheet flyer survey, posters, direct mailings. Uh, and then under other methods, add, or notice local paper backpack mailers to families. Signs posted on site that inform residents of projects and resiliency benefits.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah, that's a clear goodbye, yeah.
And then, like you said, it's gotta be, it's gotta be translated into the three most prevalent languages spoken within the community.
Oh, it's a three, I don't know, we can get by with two. What is?
Well, it would be the third, I don't think.
I don't know.
I barely know the second one.
My daughter really wants to learn Hindi after seeing R R R.
She really does, she wants to learn. Fastest growing country in the world.
She's on time. So it sounds like signage doesn't need to be decided, it's just, just to give you a preview, that is, like, it'll be part of it if you get the grant, if you get the grant. So I think that the vote is just to support, uh. Uh, submitter of the grant and, uh. Uh, writing a letter of support.
And a lot of support.
And all those in favor? Gulf of Maine Institute, did you wanna say, I don't know that that.
Well, I, I forwarded the. The note from Nancy Power, did you happen to see that?
I didn't see that.
Okay, so they did not get the grant? Oh, that's for the. That's for, yeah, so Gomi, Gulf of Maine Institute isn't involved with the MVP, that, that's.
Uh, that was for the pollinator.
Yeah, that's for the pollinator grant.
I confused, okay, alright, alright.
Yeah, so the takeaways are just, it'll be okay, we'll come up with a sign plan, and it'll be reasonable. Um, and then the, um, you know, voting to approve the grant application. And, um, cause essentially, up to this point, all we've done is voted to approve the letter of interest. Um, that was what we did back in January.
Okay.
And, and, um, and then a, um, letter of support from the select board.
So is this, this application is complete, right?
No, it's not, there's a ton more to do.
That was just the expression.
Alright, so we're not voting, if it's not done, we're not voting, right?
No, no, but you never, you never vote grants after they're done, you always, I, I, well, that's not, that's overly broad. Uh, it's never been the expectation that the board vote the language of the grant going in, it's your voting to authorize to submit over the grant. But it's, it's rare. In my experience, that, that you have like the grant application written on the time you vote that, it's, the policy is more, uh.
How, how much time is it gonna take for the staff?
When you have staff time or, or matching funds, that there's a decision by the chief elected official to do that. When you staff time or, or matching funds, that there's a decision by the chief elected official to do that. And that those decisions aren't made, just will know it.
Right, I, I thought Rick had said the application, that we had to vote on the grant application.
Oh, no, actually, no.
If I said that, that's not what we have to approve, and we are making application.
Okay, I move to approve. Uh submitting an application for the MVP grant.
Yeah, that, it's an action grant, but that's spoken.
Okay, insert word action into that motion, thank you.
Further?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and same action is requested for the car seat distribution. Program grant, this rolling grant application can be submitted anytime until early July.
Yep, I move to support some of the. What's the name of that car seat grant?
Car.
MVP distribution grant program.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Um, as, as far as the letter of support. From the slide board, you know, I have a draft. Um, you know, I took on several. People to send it to, and I have a draft, okay, and just, we, we might wanna doctor it up a little bit, but um, I'll send it to Angus and then.
Alright, the next one, uh, this is what Rick was saying, but they just learned today, they uh did not get the grant.
Yeah, so that's, we just pass over that, like, it was, it was good, it was actually pretty remarkable, um. There were, it was just ten or eleven. Groups or communities or, or organizations that came together, ranged from um, you know, West Newbury. payroll. Uh Georgetown.
It's not Andover.
And, Andover, um, the National Fish and Wildlife Service. Um, uh Green Belt Trust Eat and Reservations. I don't remember what else, it was pretty remarkable. You know, grouping of, of organizations that had come together. On, on the idea, and everybody jumped at it, you know, I, I mean, I think. Everybody's thinking about that issue as it is, and this was a way to um, you know. Prove us a group and then potentially get a bunch of money, but there was, you know, there was two hundred thousand dollars available total. And the grants could be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars, so that means you were gonna have the most four grants and at least two grant. You know, grantees, um and um, who knows where they actually went, but. And then even this, this is just to be invited as a finalist, you know, to actually submit a grant.
So just an invitation?
Yeah, this, this, yeah, this is just to get invited to. Significant chunk of money for something like that, a hundred thousand bucks?
Yeah.
Yeah. You, you can accomplish something.
Okay, next item, our request for permission to sell signage at eight gardens maintained by the West Newbury Garden Club.
I'm gonna assume that he now means twelve inches by twelve inches.
We're actually gonna cover the entry portals to the proximal bridge.
There was some vendor that was putting up, well, I think it was power washing things, I, I nailed about four or five of those. I just, I see them, I just pick them up.
Are you gonna keep doing that when you're not on the board?
No, I, I won't, but.
No, it is of the town to cover them in case.
But. They, they, they can't do that, and if they're on town property, I just pick them up and put them in a garage. It's fun.
Some of these are um on excluded areas, right, the training field? Nineteen ten building?
Yeah.
Hill's House Herb Garden, is that our jurisdiction or is that the historical?
What, what page you want?
Obviously, the Hill's House is not on town property, so I assume their herb garden is either.
And the library, that's not. Up to us, right?
So, yeah, as you can see, this just came in, you know, last week, so I, uh, Maureen had, Maureen Harris had reached out to me today. Uh asking if we had what we needed, and I said I, if there were questions that came up tonight, I don't know, but.
And these would be permanent signs, right?
I believe that's the end, yeah. So they could be invited in, I just, I wanted to get something moving, you know, just to get some input, but. I knew it would be late when this came up, so we can, we can invite them in.
It'd be interesting to know what kind of signs they were, you, you know, if they were, um, you know, attractive. And, you know, very durable signs, then.
Yeah, they fall by fall.
Yeah, no, they're small, yeah. Assuming that.
Unless they mean, yeah, feet, right?
But, yeah, I mean, things like the garden street traffic island, obviously, that's one that the town's been, you know, the board's been under pressure at times over the years. Allowing uh. You know. Commercial signage, and so, you know, you wanna make sure that, you know, you know what you're agreeing to.
Right.
So, you know, we can, we can invite them in.
I, I think we need to decide. You know, if we're gonna honor this kind of request first, I mean, if, if it's a permanent sign.
Training field is off.
Library's off?
Off limits.
Town Hall, is that acceptable? Is that not one of our excluded?
Um, I don't think there's even.
Where, where is there, where is the garden here?
The sign up front, I assume. I assume they would mean that box. That's around the, uh, the sign to sign.
So, first of all, we have to decide if we're gonna allow permanent signs. And I, I think this would establish a precedent, that it's gonna be hard to enforce the temporary sign restrictions if we allow somebody to. Permanent signs.
The difference here. I mean, it's sort of. The temporary signs are always advertising. And these are, I'm not sure, actually, I don't know what will be on this, so. I think I was gonna say.
Just might say maintained by the garden club or something.
It's advertising for the garden club, I don't know, but um, it would, it would, um, I mean, I'd like to know more.
So twelve by twelve is still not. How big is the lot up here?
No, this is, shall installation temporary signs be approved by, for the following locations, town offices, nineteen ten building, G A R Memorial Library. Training field, public safety building, or traffic islands. Less grandfathered in at the time of the policy as adoption.
So that's like almost all of these, and Ferry Lane Park is also not. Is, is that, that's not on the list, I mean, that's.
No, uh, no, because I was trying to.
Well, that's not under the select words.
Installation of temporary signs may be approved at Ferry Park or uh, Cameron Field, Bachelor Street. In those locations also require approval of parking recognition, which shall have canon custody of these properties.
So I wonder if it's.
Way, way new not to get it, okay, I'm the, I'm the. I'm not touching this one.
Whatever it's worth, giving them a copy of our sign call thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, at least so they can rule out half the list here. And then so we would wanna know what's on the sign, Rick?
Yeah, and just what kind of a sign is it, you know, um. Yeah, there, there are signs that are aesthetically pleasing, and there are signs that are less so, like the garden club, I think they. Probably an aesthetically pleasing sign, but.
But is that our standard? I mean, the, the reason for temporary signs is what? Because they're advertising?
Right.
But cared for by the garden club is also an advertising. Versus an educational sign like this palmier habitat or whatever, I mean.
Yeah.
So, I just, before we have them come in and, you know, we try to hash these things down in front of them, I think it's good to know what, you know, what our criteria are. Although, didn't we give it to you to make decisions about the sign?
We, we talked about that, but it wasn't formalized.
That's formalized.
That was for temporary.
Wait a second, we got a hot potato here.
The dog leashing for the, for the, uh.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, we did talk about, about getting that agenda to look at that.
Yeah. Alright, so what else do you need to know? I assume you don't care about this.
I, it's, it's, permanent signs, it's a tough call, you know. I mean, we said, we said we can't have any on these areas, and now they wanna have permanent signs on.
Well, I think those are off the list, if they're excluded from the temporary sign, that means they should be. Excluded from, I mean, they can't be on the training field, isn't that part of the restriction?
I think their thought is they always put the sign on it, they're the only ones that can put the signs on the training field, so I think that was.
Just that one.
Yeah.
One.
Annually, yeah, their grandfather.
I think, um. Yeah, I think that if, if we're gonna fold to that uh temporary sign policy, I think that rules out. All but the Hill's House, which isn't under our control, and Ferry Lane Park, which is not under our control, but I think all of the others are specified as not.
And the library is not under our control. The library trustees can decide that.
Town Hall is technically not on the list.
Oh, okay, so that's, so that might be.
No, that's true, that's true.
If not, we added one, there you go.
Uh, okay, I'll uh. I'll reach out to Maureen Harris and, and talk with her and share the temporary, you know. Talk about some of the considerations of the. Maybe put that on for uh one of the main meetings.
I mean, just reinforce, the whole idea of the no signs was to. You know, cut down on, it's sort of visual pollution, yeah, and, and so. The garden club should be. On board with, with having things more um. Without that, I, I would say, they never had, had this request before.
Yes, this seems to be a brand new idea, I mean, I've never, I recall receiving signs.
When they asked us if they could put signs last fall, so it's, it's for coming attractions, that was a new. They, they'd never done that before, but that was temporary.
It's gonna be, it's being temporary signs, the high school may be coming before you. Regarding those temporary signs, I don't know if you guys will put it back to that for future meetings.
What do you mean?
Remember the senior pictures?
Yeah.
They're probably gonna be coming to us, I'd say, if it's a nice pond or so. Asking to put up temporary signs and senior photos.
Well, you just have them do it in the same spot.
It, it's, if you think about it, if you, if you ever seen like the, where it says, this. Traffic island along some interstate sponsored by, you know, Midas Muffler or wherever it is, and. So it'd be like one dead geranium there, and, and the sign is like. Ten feet by ten feet, and, and it's, we don't wanna get into that, get into that. I've never seen one where the landscaping. Was very good at all, and the signs are always usually always there, but, you know, they get some sorry little. Arbividee that would, and that's it.
Now, why that's instructive all this foliage by here?
Yeah.
Alright, that's next.
Uh procurement policy. Um, so what I've put in here is uh basically reflects uh Wayne's markups and. Uh I made some limited markups beyond what he did, they're mostly his changes when I stuck circulate these actually last summer. And uh. You know, these have been kind of on the drawing board actually since twenty eighteen, and uh. I think, given some of what's going on, I think it would be helpful to have. Uh, these two on the books, uh, I don't know that they're perfect, I think they're good. I'm, I'm happy with them as written, I did find uh. A sample procurement policy from the town of Boxborough, that's like seventeen pages full of detail, it goes much. Beyond these in terms of the actual specifics, uh of, for instance, at what point. In a purchasing process does uh, you know, an apartment head or board commission committee get the CPO involved? And I started to think, you know, should I try to weave that in, but that's really a whole other level of uh. Documentation, and I think until we get, uh, you know, with Wayne's departure, you know, I don't wanna load up the CPO with. With more and more and more responsibility, if right now we're gonna have an interim prepared at top. Uh, but I, I do think that this is all. I think if we, if this gets voted, and we send this around to all the apartment heads, boards, commissions and committees, it just helps everyone understands. What is thirty B, at what point should I be, you know, concerned or asking questions, that's really what we want, is before people initiate. A purchasing process that they know enough to know that it's above a certain threshold, and they have to look into what process uh. You know, applies.
So I, I, I think this is really good, I um, I just have two comments on the chapter thirty B. Under applicability, it just says including boards, committees, can we say including all boards, committees and commissions, just so it's clear that. That all boards are run by this.
Yeah. Or boards, commissions and committees, so somebody rearrange that. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at Wayne's marked up copy, and then under B for quotation and bidding requirements. I, I think it would be good if we identify what sound business practices are for under ten thousand. I know, I mean, Wayne had told me for the library, you know, just call, you know, try to get three verbal quotes. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, even that one isn't, is, there was a little, little bit of nuance to that, because it was known to be. Leading to future work, so it was kind of a segmentation issue.
Right, I just think it would be good to define what that is so people are clear, um.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's too subjective.
Yeah, so I, um. I have a couple of things, uh. Um, page one hundred and seven, uh, under A responsibilities, the last sentence, there's. Something wrong, the town departments are responsible for maintaining contracts and bid slash quote related procurement records. Which submits executed contracts, I'm not sure, um. How it's supposed to read exactly, but.
That's, well, that is, that's right from what we got from BLS, but I agree with, this was actually the sentence where I started to. I had a modification of this, because I felt like. It really ought to be the CPO maintaining. You know, bids and quotes, whether it's, whether they're this signatory of the contract or not, I start, I had actually expanded this, and then I ended up reverting to the. ELS, because as I was thinking through, I thought, you know. I just, I.
I think there should be a central, central thing, yeah.
Like a central purchasing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how larger communities operate, it's just where, right now, we have, you know, a CPO who's. Doing this on the side, and who has a really busy job, and now uh we're not gonna, we'll. We'll not have one, or we'll have an interim prepared, I'm just a little concerned about if we go too far. Are we creating enormous amount of administrative work for someone who right now doesn't exist? And if it ends up, let's say, being me, or being Jim, or being whoever it is, are we then, you know, we write it too. Tightly. You know, to, to that, does that office then become a logjam to where? Uh. You know, the town can't make purchases, I, the one thing that would be really helpful would be. Uh, and this would, I think, be very easy uh for Jenny to do, uh would be to run a list of every vendor. Paid over ten thousand dollars, and run that maybe for the last few years, so we would have a list, so we would all know, like, what are the type of contracts that trigger that. That trigger the ten thousand.
I mean, doesn't the town accountant maintain contracts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all original contracts have to be on file with the town account, uh, under state law.
So I'm not, so this says the town departments are responsible for.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That's what you, that's what you don't want, Angus.
I know.
Said that alone.
Yeah.
So another point, and I don't think it should be in this document, but um. I don't know if you're familiar with this, Angus, it's a chapter twenty five A. Which is, it's procurement policy for uh, uh, energy conservation measures and energy management systems. Um, and um, I I started to Wayne, I mean, I sent him the documentation. Which he was really pleased to see, because it made it a lot easier to go ahead and do, um. And and talk with B two Q about the work that they were gonna do, so that it was part of Green Communities Act back. However, many years ago that was done, um. Um, and yeah, it's chapter twenty five A.
I think I've heard you mention it before, but I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, so essentially what it does, it was originally for a threshold of the hundred thousand dollars, I believe that it's got up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars now, but for. Um, energy conservation measures or, you know, energy. Does it, energy man, no, not energy man, it's E M S, whatever that, the acronym stands for in that case, um. You know, below the threshold, um, uh. You you don't have to follow the uh, chapter thirty, so you just, um, essentially the pre-qualified vendors. By the state.
So would that, that would need to be in our policy then, if it's our state?
Um, yeah, but I don't know if we wanna complicate this right now, because that that's not gonna come up that often, if if, I mean, it has come up. Um, you know, several times. But it isn't that often, so, yeah.
Would you have any other?
No, that was it.
Actually.
No, I'm good.
So. Do you wanna look into the edits or?
Yeah, I think, I think so, I think, um. Yeah, I'd like, cause that that last sentence of section A, that didn't really sit well with me either, and I I literally, I rewrote it, and then. And then I was looking at this Boxborough policy, which is like seventeen pages, and I was starting to, and I said, you know, I start to put it in. And I decided, you know, I'm just gonna, this is the state model, so I said, I was gonna stick with that, but as you pointed out, you're right, I I had the same thought that. I didn't really like the verbiage of departments maintaining contracts, because it it kind of muddies the water. That by state law, that the town accountant has to have all contracts, so I think there's a way to rewrite it without completely blowing it up. Uh, but then maybe restates or maybe puts in the citation that the state, that the town accountant needs to have all contracts. Uh, I just wanna make sure there's a balance between. Uh, you know, engagement with and and oversight of the C P O. Without that office becoming a logjam to where now everything's. Comes to a screeching halt, because as our guy goes through an office that right now doesn't exist. Uh, and for the foreseeable future will be a, I I mean, I don't think the town of West Newbury would ever have a dedicated purchasing office, which is not big enough. So it's always gonna be part of someone else's job. So, yeah, I can, I can uh. Work on that a little more, um. But I think this is helpful to at least advance things, and then the procurement conflict of interest, if we could have, you know, get similar input on S. Uh, so that next time we could bring it forward to get it, get it approved. Uh, one thing we did my last job, that they had a local ethics policy where, at the beginning of each. Year, we would, the the finance office would circulate a list of all vendors that they business with above a certain, I think it was five thousand dollars. And every. Member of the town council, or the seventh member council, had to file a disclosure if they do any business with anyone. You know, on that list, uh, there's similar lack of in here. Uh, yeah, this uh, page one eleven, that my office would maintain a list of uh. Of who has to participate in in that review.
Yeah, I didn't have any. Lots of pressure on this one. Would it be helpful for us to adopt this one now, or do you know?
I think without, I think they had to be done this at the same time, because they they relate one another.
Okay.
So it's just a little bit, we'll, I'll look out for that.
Okay.
So I'm good with that. Right, I am, um, the cotton street. Answer of interest in the portion of the lands. I did hear from the conservation agent today that the ConCon was satisfied with that. Any questions on that one? No. Alright, and I just, I had seen this, and, you know, I don't know if there's anything to say about it, but just that the contract was executed, so.
Right, yeah, and, you know, they've uh, quickly come back with a, a ton of questions, which is good, you know, they need data.
Will they be able to look at all of the properties listed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that, I mean, that's, yeah, that was, um, that was what was in the. Um, the R Q, and and that's what they agreed to do, so. Um, but, you know, part of what they're doing is, you know, looking at, they wanna get information on energy usage by the. Buildings that are around them, because that affects the economics and, you know, the, the effects, how you actually use any, any energy that you produce. You use it on the site or. Or you do something else for it.
Okay, uh, you already talked about item O, item P, just to let you know, we do have a staff working group and. Uh, Ronald Ross, our representative on the regional veterans board, is part of that, he came, we had a meeting set up last week or the week before.
Sure.
It was sometime. Uh, but yeah, we had kind of a kickoff meeting to start working the parade, and Rebecca's been helping with that. Jim's involved in Christine and uh. Sergeant Grant was there, and uh, a lot of us. So, yeah, we got a good core people, we got a lot of work to do, but it'll come together. I don't think we've had any questions for the board at this time on the parade.
Will you all be participating? Or is it not?
Other, other updates, uh, we did have, uh. Uh, I participated along with Jake, uh, Susie and with Christian, and the library had a. Cyber, kind of a cyber audit, uh, so we had a a call with their. Uh, there was a, basically, a tech consultant hired by the. Merrimack Valley uh, Library Consortium, uh, to basically audit each of their member libraries to see about their tech. Uh, security, so me and Christian and Jake participated in the kickoff. Uh, initial assessment, which was early last week, and then. Friday afternoon, there was a follow-up that that Corinne said she wouldn't, she didn't need us part of, but I received a report on that today, and there were some. Uh, issues found, so there would be some recommendations coming out of that. Um, partly to do with, you know, I think they'd like to see some improved written policies, including on things like. Uh, you know, separation of servants and documenting that, so that people, employees are kind of promptly frozen out. Some of it, I think, might be a little bit overkill for the library, I think it's good stuff for the town office, where we have more of a. Network server over there, it seems like there's really only two staffs that have any kind of network files, uh, but but anyway, there's, there's a. Uh, you know, there was a a pretty lengthy list of things, so. Uh, I think they had fifty-three questions for us last, uh, last week, while we're back. Uh, so we knew there would be some recommendations.
But that's all, following up on that is responsible of the library not, not in this building?
Correct, but they don't have. An I T administrator, so that's, so, and and a lot of the, you know, we worked together with with Corinne on a. Uh, cyber renewal insurance application, because they have different I T. Um, kind of framework than we do, uh, but they're subject to, they're they're covered by the town's insurance. So we did a separate insurance application for them, and uh, I think it's gonna be interesting how it all. Plays out going forward, because just like all of us, they're, they're being expected to, to do more and more and more on the I T side. And they're not really resourced to do that, so, uh, it's not part of Jake's contract. Uh, and that's something that, um. You know, they work with the Merrimack Library Consortium, is basically their network administrator. Uh, but they declined to be named in that capacity in our insurance application, or they they had real cold feet about that.
Do they have to be the internet administrator?
Well, that's kind of, that's a conversation I I had with Corinne, is is there. They are in fact the go-to, if there's an issue with the network, that's who Corinne calls, so I said, we. Either have to name them, or if they're not gonna do what. We need them to do, that we need to look at some other, some other. Maybe spending money on something, so we'll, we'll see what all, what all comes out of it.
I think they should be on the same. You know, use the same uh, provider that the town is building. I mean, wouldn't that make sense?
It would just, it would, it would kind of cost, yeah, and 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 I don't, I can't, I don't know if Jake has the the capacity. Uh, you know, I know he's got a lot of other clients. I know he's always busy, so, but it's something that we'll, we'll figure out, one step at a time. Yeah, there's a lot of other things going on, but I can't think of that. The thing come booklet, and we got it really nicely, you know, that was a big effort. I think it really came out well.
Great. I'm sure it did.
Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to go through it yet.
No, it's good, it's good, it's, it's, it's nice to read. The the cover memo that is is really, I think it's really written well, and covers a lot of ground. Uh, Kristin did a nice job, and Rob was part of that.
So is it down to the wire like it has been in the past?
Not, uh, not like it has been in the past, no, there were no late nights, uh, you know, definitely, I mean, last week. In particular. There were significant parts of each workday that I was like, you know, basically, you know, it it's coming handy out of Rebecca helping. As she's able to triage by email.
Yeah.
Um. It's it's unbelievably amount of email, again, it's unbelievable, uh, so anyway, I was able to help me focus some time on that. Now, there were no like late nights, no, no ridiculousness, but uh. But, you know, I didn't really start on the packet until Friday morning, because the focus was the booklet, so, you know, it's been, it's been busy.
I'm making motion, we're going to, uh. Executive session, and then.
Second.
Not come back into open session.
Uh, did you say the purpose for the, right?
Um. In accordance with Mass General on chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A seven.
Archibald. Thirty, thank you. Alright, good night, everyone, thank you.